How are you doing?
Good.
Everything's wonderful?
Moving along.
Wonderful. Might be, could have many, many different.
Yeah.
Might, might be a little.
You'll have to check and make sure.
It's fair to them for a while.
Yeah.
They're interested in stuff. Then Mike keeps us occupied.
Okay, we're on.
Three oh eight.
And.
Thirty bucks.
M ten.
Or a day's work.
Maybe. Not a whole lot.
He showed me three oh.
They came home and they wanted our name. We're going. Burning a hole in the bucket.
Is that right?
It's a good find.
Nigger's like two, two, three.
Ready when you are, Mayor.
All right. Oh, it's a full house. All right. Calm down, everybody. All right, let's call October fourth meeting to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a good public for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Bellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Crummick.
Here.
Councilmember Swift.
Here.
Mayor Protem Leggero.
Here.
Mayor Alves.
Mayor, okay. Let's see, we're going to start off it tonight. I guess we can see comfortable now. Here he is. Approval of these consent calendar. Yeah, let's talk consent, talk everything off.
Okay.
Do we have a motion for consent calendar?
Mayor Alves, regarding item number two, I will be abstaining from voting on check number nine, eight, one, five.
Very good. Do you have a motion for the consent calendar?
I had a, I had one question about it. It seemed like the, um, the amount was a lot higher. It was like four hundred, five hundred thousand. Is it, what's the reason for that? Did that include anything special or anything else that we're not seeing?
And by amount, you mean demands, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's see here. For the demands, I mean, typically it's just items that are, that come in at that time to be paid. And so as far as any large, larger items than we typically see, we did have a debt payment to the Civic Center that amounted to fourteen thousand.
Tom Hillier for thirty-two for a police interceptor?
Yes, that's a big one. Tom Hillier Ford for the police interceptor. So that's about thirty-three thousand. And it's just, it's just timing. So there might be different items or one-time payments that are included on here. There's also a wastewater payment for our two thousand eighteen wastewater for one hundred and eighty-six thousand. So that's where that's.
There's one for two thousand.
So that's why it might be more than usual at this point in time.
What's that wastewater one for one hundred and eighty-six thousand? Can we, what's the details on that a little bit?
Um, I'm unsure specifically on it, but I believe we have an existing loan for wastewater that we're paying off. I don't know if, Justin, do you have any to elaborate on that? I don't even know if you can hear me, Justin. Can you hear me?
What are you doing here?
Yes, I can hear you. I'm not sure exactly what that is. We'd have to look into it and get back to him. At least I would.
I can look into that and get back to you if you like.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
In fact, any of those types of questions we have and we don't have answers, I'd like them all brought back to the next meeting so we have answers.
Sure. I can also follow up with an email to all of you.
That's fine, too.
Okay. I will find, I will find out exactly what that's to and get it right back to you.
Yeah. Okay, we had a motion somewhere around here.
Yeah, move to approve.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
We have the motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Carrie's five oh. Okay. Let's see, number two. Just. Approve of register demands, we did that. That's all, okay, let's go to staff communication.
So I have a number of items to go over before we meet item four. The first item, we received a request from the Historical Society and they have basically requested to take up an additional area for the, buy a brick over at Main Street Park. So this is the area that they are interested in, in utilizing for future brick use. And I just need a consensus from council that we're okay with that area.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
So we already have an ongoing program for the Historical Society out there, right?
We do. And they've gotten to the point where they need more space.
Yeah.
Sure, why not?
Any objections, gentlemen? No objections, so I guess it's a go.
Okay.
I would actually recommend you go back to the backside so it's even with the one on the other side.
Oh, you're so symmetrical.
I am. It's a.
They might ask for it eventually anyway.
Yes, it's going to get there, so let's do it.
All right.
Is that something you'd like me to suggest, or?
If they want to find, if not, no biggie. There's a gas line underneath those other ones. That's the only I'd worry about. Or not, gas, electric, they ran out for those new charging plants.
Okay.
So I don't know.
We can double, we can double check on that picture.
There you go. Whatever floats your boat.
But if they are interested in pursuing the existing space, I have a consensus of the council to move forward with that.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
And my next item was regarding the temporary structures. I know we spoke a few meetings ago regarding mending the ordinance. I have received comments from council on that. We will be putting a draft ordinance together and we are going to try to move that as quickly as possible. So that is in the works. So I just wanted to provide you an update on that. It will go to Planning Commission and then come back to council for review and approval. There will be a public hearing held at the Planning Commission level, which will be advertised in the Escalon Times. And then it will be advertised, a public hearing at the council level as well. So there will be opportunity in the newspaper, if everyone's looking into that newspaper, to provide any feedback that they're interested in providing.
When is that going to the Planning Commission? This month?
Um, I'm not, we're not going to be able to make it this month. Hopefully next month, which would be our November meeting. I think we could make that. If not, it would be the December meeting.
It would have to go to the second city council meeting in November then, right? Because the Planning Commission meets.
Planning Commission meets mid-November, so it would probably meet the first meeting in December because we need a ten-day advertisement in between, which we'll try to coordinate to expedite as, as quickly as we can once, once we get it finalized.
So mid, well, in December, we might be able to finalize the ordinance change?
We might be able to finalize, but then it takes thirty days to go into effect.
Okay.
So we will, but we will be working on, on moving that forward as quickly as we can. Another item was regarding the senior housing. I did reach out to a few, I haven't reached out to all of them, a few of the developers or investors that we were speaking to regarding senior housing to kind of find out why they did not provide a proposal or, or a request for, of proposal qualification for that RFQ that we put out. And the main thing was that even, even with the land playing into, you know, the possibility of, of having the land given to them to be able to do this project, there was still a huge gap of costs that would need to be compensated for it. And so some of them found that gap to be either, either too large that they wouldn't be able to deal with it. And I did speak with RHF as well, and they said even with the land in tow, they would still be needing one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is like a gap.
You read that check.
And that's where, and that's where the tax credits and the affordable programs, all the money that the state would provide you or federal government would provide to cover that gap. And so it sounds like that's the main reason that we didn't have any application.
So is it, it's not, not the developer fees?
No, we haven't even gotten to the developer fees. It's just the cost for construction. Yeah, and.
But if we have, if we have eight hundred thousand dollars in funding that we could put towards that.
In addition to the land.
In addition to the land, to get the project that we want, is that something that we, that might be a big enough carrot to?
And that's exactly, when I spoke to RHF last week, that's exactly what they asked about, like, do you have any other pots of money? They were looking more at like our home CDBG funds, which we have those as well. But because we're so small and those formulas are based on population, we get, you know, I think it's thirteen thousand a year for home and we get about seventy thousand a year for CDBG. We could collect up to three years and provide them that pot, but they would really be needing that housing and lieu monies that we have, which is at total council discretion whether we'd be willing to put that and land towards the project. They did say, it was Bob Farr that I had talked to, he did say that he is not the, you know, numbers guru in the finance area. And so we ran some scenarios and made updates to some pro formas that he had shared with us. And we're going to meet back up in two weeks to go over that once he runs it through his finance. So they are moving forward, trying to figure out ways and figure out exactly what they would need to be able to move the project.
Are they going to submit us a proposal?
Once they get that far, they had received approval from their board to put some money towards drawing up plans and such, and such, and so that still exists, we just haven't gotten that far.
It'd be nice to know if we had some, uh, preliminary information. I mean, we can move forward all we want, but if we're going to end up delivering something we don't want, what's the point?
Yeah, I mean, and that would be it. It would be, have to be something, and he understands that, something we want in order for us to give you land and/or any funds.
Well, we'd have to weigh it. We'd have to see what they're offering and then look what we have to offer and see if it really makes sense to do it.
So was the, because the RFP that we put out was for how many units?
The RFQ, the RFQ was asking for a minimum of twenty-five or thirty-five attainable units. And then it was open how many they wanted to propose after that. We were looking specifically for twenty-five to thirty-five attainable units.
I think it's a matter of, of scope that they, they can't scale it to, to those amount of units. And I know later we're going to be talking about the land that we have available. And so I don't think that this thing is a dead end. I do think that it's still possible. I think there are developers out there that would want to take on this project. But I do think the scope that we were looking for is too small. I think that the scope needs to be greater so that they can spread those costs out more and make the thing pencil.
I did also speak to an investor that works with developers as well, and they found, they found some other developers that are building stuff currently in, in the Lowdy area that they think would be interested. They had checked status on our RFQ and I let them know that we didn't have any submittals. And so they were wanting to schedule something in the next few weeks to bring somebody in as well. And so it's, it's moving forward. I think, I, I mean, I, I get the feeling that because it was like the formality and having to put something together, I think they all prefer that bouncing, bouncing off ideas and moving forward more informally than actually submitting a proposal. But yeah, the biggest thing was is to make those thirty-five, twenty-five or thirty-five attainable units, you do need to increase the number of units. And, and in most investors or developers' pockets, yeah, they want, there's, there's really no incentive for them to make attainable or affordable housing unless they have some funding to back it. And so with, with RHF, they're, they're really, really open to it and they're going to, they're, they're trying to work with us and find out exactly what they need. But yeah, in terms of other developers that are more local or do smaller projects and such, it, it wasn't the, the project for them. They need, they need additional funding to subsidize that loss of revenue that they're going to be receiving because of the lowered rents that are not market rate. So.
So.
And the market rate continues to move up.
You said to be able to afford the tax incentives and things like that. I mean, is it, is it a cash flow situation? Because if they're ultimately going to be getting tax incentives anyway, or is it just a good old fashioned shortfall?
It's a, it's a gap without receiving any state or federal funding. There is a one point seven million dollar gap. So they would still need to apply to the state. And when you apply to the state for any type of funding for housing, that's where you have to meet that affordability requirement, where they want a certain project to have a level of affordability. Actually, they did advise me that last year, the state of California did move forward with a amendment to their processes where they allowed some type of mixed use, but they've never been able to apply it yet, where you can have so many moderate or above income and so many low income. And as long as the percentage of the number is under a certain percentage, you might be able, they'll, they'll still give you the money. But you're still competing with other projects in other cities to get that pot of money. And so it could be something that takes a few tries before we're actually funded.
Well, I know that, I know that there are builders and developers that are taking on assist, you know, assisted living in certain projects. My, my grandpa, who is ninety-three years old, lives in Los Angeles, he's looking to possibly move up to this area. And he's looking at the park, which is a development, assisted living in Modesto, right across from the Kaiser. And I know for a fact that, so there, there, there are developers out there that want to build, you know, high-end facilities to facilitate people. And I, I think that we need to stay on this. I don't think it's something we just let go because we didn't get any requests.
No, no.
I think that would be a mistake.
And that is not staff's intention. We're going to keep moving forward with the groups that have still maintained interest. And there are still a few.
So, no, and I agree. I don't think, yeah, I don't think, I don't think we're dropping this one at all yet. But to Mayor Protem Leggero's point, you know, to get closer to the kind of project that we want, be it with RHS or anybody else, you know, at what point do you say, hey, listen, for that right project, we do have some ideas that might be able to help out? I mean, I think, I think we're probably at that point in the negotiations, at least with RHS. RHS?
RHF, correct. Yeah, we are trying to move forward.
So I mean, are we okay with that at this point?
Yeah. And then I did have somebody let me know that they would call in, so.
I do, I do want to remind, remind council, we're just in staff communications, not open discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're very quizzical guys.
So I'll provide another staff update on that at the next meeting. The, the next item I had up there was Councilmember Crummick, a few weeks ago, had presented the idea of a community meeting. And so I'm putting that out there as, as something, find out your interest, your feedback.
Thanks for reminding me.
And staff, and staff direction.
Well, I like, it's a good idea. It's just a matter of when.
I just think there's so many things going on right now that, you know, the last one we had was, was, you know, a while ago. And I, I think we got a good turnout, you know, we had a hundred-plus people there.
How long ago was that?
Oh, man.
It was two years ago.
I want to say two eight, two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, and, and maybe, yeah, well, maybe making a concerted effort to, to do some sort of larger event at the community center to get people and let them know what's going on in town and we value their feedback, just kind of a more widely advertised thing than just the city council meetings, I think would be beneficial.
I think it was at the beginning of twenty nineteen, and you're right, it was. And that's why the Escalon Senior Fund bunch, that's how that started. So yeah, no, they're very fruitful. My only hesitation is we're doing an awful lot to change the structure of a couple of things here, you know, interim finance director, interim city manager, so we're changing a lot around. So again, not to make another football analogy, Monday Night Football here, but, you know, you simplify the playbook when you get a new quarterback in, just for, just for a little bit until they get up to speed. I think we should do it. You know, timing-wise, I think it's going to be in everything.
Well, that's a good point. I mean, you're right. I think the fact that we're trying to get back on track, well, we could, doesn't mean we can't. It just means we need to get it at a time where it's more.
Well, we're doing things like, you know, raising everybody's, you know, you got the thing with Jilton, we got things going on at the city manager level and, and different places, and we got future developments, we're talking about skate park issues. I mean, I think there's a lot of things that people would want to turn out for and at least get a little bit more informed, you know, because as much as we like to think that a lot of people tune into these meetings, nobody does. I almost guarantee you, nobody's watching right now.
There are actually.
I don't know.
We got about ten people that know what's going on in this town. And it might be beneficial to try to do our best to reach out to people and let them know what's going on.
Yeah.
Well, the meeting we had two years ago was a fairly decent success, I'll give you that. But it's almost like force-feeding them. I mean, it's hard to get people to get interested.
And you know, maybe timeframe was, I think that meeting was in February of twenty nineteen. Maybe timeframe was, that's a good timeframe for everybody because, you know, what are we going to do during the holiday season?
Yeah, that's a really good point.
Well, another thing to think.
Do it at the first of the year, I think you might have more success.
You could. Another thing to think about is in twenty twenty-two is an election year, so there's going to be three seats, my seat, Mayor Alves, Councilmember Swift, we're all up for reelection. So it might be a time to, you know, have people just kind of know who is up here and who's calling the shots and, and maybe, you know, get some feedback that way. I just think, you know, if you wait till twenty twenty-two, and it might get a little muddled, you know, with different things going on. I don't know.
So how about I bring this back up in the new year, January?
There you go.
Yeah. And we can continue to try to put some more additional updates, maybe in our newsletter, put some more stuff out on Facebook. I mean, those are definitely resources that we appear to have more participation in, and we can try to push those a little bit more.
Sure. My motivation was just to let everybody know what's going on. So a lot of stuff going on, so.
Okay. So for now, I could, I'll bring it back at the beginning of the year and we can kind of see where we're going from there.
If that's a consensus, I'm okay with that, yeah.
Anybody got any objections to that? No objections? That sounds like a good idea.
Yep, there we go.
Okay.
All right.
Are we done with staff communications?
Do you have anything?
I don't.
Do you have anything? We're done with staff communication.
We do. Okay, so let's move on to number four, which is the discussion of Escalon High School Pool Needs Assessment.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there anybody from the school or the person who did the review to talk about that?
No, there is not. We have our monthly meetings with the school district, so this was talked about at our last meeting, and then we will be meeting with the school district on the fourteenth to kind of follow up with where we're at on that. So the city resumed having the monthly meetings with the school district in September, and at the September sixteenth meeting, city staff and Councilmember Swift met with the members of the school board and their staff to update one another on the events and ongoing activities of our agencies. The school board shared a needs assessment that was completed by Aquatic Design Group on the high school pools, which includes both the L-shaped six-lane pool with diving board and the smaller waiting pool. The document provides an assessment of the facility's existing conditions, recommendations for action and options to be weighed by both council and the school district. A pro forma budget, which is on page twenty-nine of the assessment, was also included to address the various code violations, repairs and future maintenance costs, which are currently estimated at a little over two million dollars. These costs exclude bathroom and locker room improvements, as well as path of travel, ADA upgrades if, if required or necessary. Page thirty of the assessment discusses the potential enhancements that would be needed if there was a need and desire to enhance the pool's use by offering competitive swimming trainings and/or any other programs or classes. An enhanced scenario would increase the pool cost to approximately four million dollars. In the event that the city and school district do not move forward with the pool repairs and/or enhancement of the pool, council direction and feedback is needed for sharing with the school district at the next meeting on October fourteenth. And so we did discuss this at staff level with our Public Works Superintendent. And, and I know Robert was, or Councilmember Swift was present at the meeting with us. And it, and it appears the school district currently uses the pool about a month, one month out of the year. They have a track at this point in time that they need to invest monies into to repair that they have not been able to collect monies on to be able to do so. And so the, the pool does not appear to be their first priority. Not to say it's not a priority, but it's not the first priority that they have. And correct me if I'm, if I misspeaking, but that was, that was my understanding. And so they brought this item in the assessment. And when you're going through the assessment, it does talk about the, the code violations and situations. And now that the assessment's been completed, if we're not looking towards trying to make these repairs or address the pool concerns and, and fix some of those repairs, which some of them, we may be able to operate existing, some not, we're still exposing ourselves to potential litigation or issues if something does go wrong at the pool. And so at, at, at this point in time, if we weren't to move forward on that, which we obviously have some time because we're out of pool session, we would be looking at boarding it up, closing it off, securing it so that nobody's able to access it. So that's one of those options.
How did you come up with the assessment of four million dollars? Who did that?
So the, it's, it's, it's the Aquatic Design Group, and four million dollars is the enhanced scenario where it's my understanding when this pool was, was built back in two thousand, that it wasn't built big enough to, to do competitive swim.
It was not built to accommodate race and also water polo.
And so that's the estimate that they've provided to be able to provide.
Who are they?
Aquatic Design, the person that's completed the assessment.
Aquatic Design?
Aquatic Design Group. That's who has drafted the assessment, and it's estimated at costs. And it is.
That's one quote.
Yeah.
So I have a question on.
It's one quote, that is true.
Code violations. Have we had someone from an agency that come out and tell us that we have things we need to fix on that pool, or is that just based on current code? Because obviously in two thousand, it was passed with it as built. Now we're complaining about the height of jets, either they're putting water in or taking water out at eighteen inches or something, and we're not there. Obviously, it was passed twenty years ago when it was built. Are those actual problems now that we're being violated on code for that we have to fix, or is that the wish list for a lot of this stuff?
So there's a, there's a mixture of both. There are issues that are probably, and we know, we could follow up with Aquatic Design Group and, and find out. But there's probably a mix where there's ones that have been updated that are probably required to be updated that we maybe haven't updated because it's existing. And then there's ones that you can probably operate the pool at. I think that's something that we would want to have.
Few other people.
Our risk management, give us an opinion on as well, since we have our own risk management.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we get some other estimates before we assume that's the number?
I'm just providing you this, this assessment so you have the information. And that's direction, if that's the direction.
Yeah, what you mentioned reminds me a lot of the water thing we had.
One thing I'd like to say, and one thing I'd like to say, we can get corrected by the school district, if this is wrong, but this assessment costs the school district and the city, which we're a small percent, but I believe this was a seven to seventy-five hundred dollar evaluation that Aquatics put together. So this isn't just a free estimate that we were able to get. If we go out and get another assessment, it will be on average seven to eight thousand dollars per assessment for the pool.
Hey, and Justin, also, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that there was something that had to be done to that pool, which triggered numerous upgrades.
The biggest, the biggest, the biggest thing is that on page nine of the assessment is there's sixteen items that they're saying are code violations that are needing to be done in order to get this pool into code, which two of the biggest items are trenching and cutting the bottom of the pool out to add more drains and more inlets and more, what do they call here, equalizer fittings to the swimming pool. So regardless, it's to get it back up to code violation, which those items alone are estimated. are estimated, um, at a hundred and forty-five thousand each to do, so you're three hundred thousand in just on trenching into the pool to get on in that, but that's only two of the items that need to be repaired for code violations.
I guess the the next question I've got, just to get to the nuts and bolts of it, so we have a shared interest in this pool, is there an obligation somewhere that says we're responsible for X percentage of what happens with this pool in this town, or is this just a, we think you should pay this much? Where's our financial responsibility with this pool as a city? Um, I I'd like to get it fixed, I'm not trying to say that, but what is our true obligation? They say they use it for a month, are they saying that we use it more, and our share is more than theirs? What is, what's the share thing going on here?
It's, you, and I, did you have it there, Dominique? But it's a, it's broken down in a percentage of what the school district pays and what we paid, and we're around the thirty-two, thirty-three percent of whatever invoice comes in for the pool.
I wanted to say somewhere around thirty-eight, so they're respons- they're usually responsible.
Some's a bit larger, they have it the whole year, and we play around with it for two months.
I thought they were looking at one point two, and we were looking at eight hundred thousand or something like that.
Yeah, they have, they have the higher percentage.
They got the higher percentage.
In the sixties, and we're in the thirties.
Yeah, that's not accurate, in my opinion, but.
Yeah.
Opinion is mine.
Well, but both entities don't have that kind of money, that's the bottom line.
Sixty percent to the district, sixty point one-six percent to the district, and thirty-nine point eight-four to the city, and this was in our, um, swimming pool facilities agreement that was approved back in two thousand.
Their choice of when and how much they use that pool is on them, they have it for ten months of the year.
I mean, and I think that's come up, is that because of the size and 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 what it is, and it and it, it's not the right size to be able to do a lot of the school functions, they basically use it for PE.
Was that their decision at the time they built it?
Uh.
They had a pool that had enough lanes.
I'm not sure how many gallons.
They decided to build a smaller one.
Probably in the assessment.
Two hundred and seventy-six thousand gallons.
Okay, I see, it's in that assessment somewhere.
I got twenty-five in my.
I got, uh.
And and my apologies as well, because we got a little focused on the four million dollar for replacement, but yes, it's the two million for like all of the repairs to to bring it up, and then like Justin was saying, there are certain things that can be addressed now.
And they think we should pay about forty percent of that?
And that's and that's how it would be, but we always, when moving forward with items, we always check in with them because we're splitting the costs, and so if they don't agree to paying that, yeah, then then we wouldn't move forward with it because we'd have to pay for it all.
I need a, I need a little education here on this, um, and I apologize for not reading through all of this, which I did not do. So, we built the pool in two thousand, right? Or the school, the school built the pool in two thousand, two thousand one?
With donations, a lot of them.
Two thousand.
Okay, two thousand, and it was not built, um, long enough to do swim races, is that correct?
Or enough lanes, yeah.
Or enough lanes. And so since since that's happened, and I frequented that pool many times over the years for, you know, one or two months out of the summer, um, I remember going to the old pool when it was in the the parking lot, you know, on the corner now, and, um, you know, back then you could do flips off the diving board, and now you're not allowed to, I guess, too dangerous. And, um, so I'm trying to figure this out, that the the pool needs certain renovations, and the school district wants us to pay our fair share essentially to what those are. Am I am I understanding that correctly?
At this point in time, they're they're just, they're bringing us this document and letting us know that this is where the pool stands.
Okay.
And we're letting our our council know where the pool stands.
So, I, go ahead, Justin.
Between the, between the school district and.
Go ahead, Justin.
There, Justin?
No, between the last few years, between the school district and the city, there's just been issues that have been arising that have been making us extremely nervous, um, with the very last one being a major black algae issue that we had in the pool that took so much time to get it to where we were able to have, um, a swim season, but it it's just an ongoing occurrence that is keep happening, and with that being said, we've been trying to get an evaluation for some years.
Yeah.
But it's expensive, and that's why.
I think, so from my perspective, you know, if this pool was was originally built the way it was supposed to be, and the right size and all these things, it could be a great thing, we could have, uh, we could have a swim team, we could have a water polo team, we could have these things that are benefiting, and the pool is being utilized more than just one or two months out of the year. But now, we all drive by, and we look at it, and you got this fenced-in beautiful pool that nobody ever uses, and I remember going to True Value Hardware over here, and the the owner told me a pool is nothing more than a a hole in the ground you throw money in, and it seems like that is what's become of this. And I hate the idea of saying, you know what, whatever's going on right now, it's it's not working, it's not worth the money, we don't have the money to pay for this kind of renovations. I I, you know, at this point, I don't know. It it's tough for me to decide to to put money into this thing that's utilized literally one month out of the year, and this year, they shut the pool down early because there wasn't enough attendance during summer. I remember going, they were supposed to be open for two more weeks, they were like, today's the last day. You know, I pay my eight dollars for my kids to go, and I I don't know, this seems like a like a like a terrible investment at this point.
We also, as staff, had a hard time hiring lifeguards, we're required to have lifeguard.
You can't, you can't hire lifeguard, so this thing is literally being utilized for open swim and some swim lessons during the summer for one or two months, and then ten or eleven months out of the year, it's just sitting there, uh, you know, being, not being utilized, and I'm not casting blame on anybody whoever built this back twenty-one years ago, but I think we have to decide if this is something we want to put any more money into.
Well, and I'll tell you, Council Kremet, to that point, you're right, uh, you know, it wasn't, it was a most well-intentioned plan, you know, but you're right, it wasn't long enough, didn't have enough lanes. Obviously, there was, there was never any provision either for to set up replacement costs, you know, for down the road either. This day of obviously is going to come, and unfortunately, we've come to it. At that meeting, we had two school board members, and I don't know if they have addressed it at a school board meeting or not.
I'm not sure.
The feeling I got from those two members was, this is the end game, okay? Um, and after seeing what I saw at the, uh, that joint school, you know, district meeting, you know, county, city meeting, I'm of the same opinion. It's a darn shame, um, but it is what it is, and we could say, argue percentages all day long, if they cannot justify on their end to do this, again, it's the end game.
And it wouldn't be.
We cannot justify on our end to do it. Again, it's the end game.
It wouldn't be a problem if if we had, Escalon High had a swim team, or they had a water polo team, and everybody was benefiting, but this thing being utilized for the last two decades for one month out of the year, we might as well fill the whole thing with dirt, call it a day.
There's just keep work, I would.
That idea was actually mentioned at the meeting, House Member, I mean, Mayor.
I can't, I can't, uh, I know what we're, what we're in here, but I'm not in favor of of spending money on this thing, it's it's, there's no ROI, there's no return on investment on this thing in my mind, and I I don't, I don't like this.
I would like to see somebody go back in with this, um, study and, what do you want to call it, a bid, and actually find out what are the true code violations we are obligated to fix and which we're not, and what we can and can't live with, because I think you can pare that two million down to half that at least.
I agree.
There are certain things that they say it's a code violation, it's probably grandfathered in because it was okay twenty years ago, if you don't mess with it. So, what can we touch and not touch without affecting change on these other things that would facilitate the two million dollars?
Good approach.
And get the pool back up and running for a lot less money.
There we go.
I don't think the wish list here that's on here is what's required, it's what they think they want to do for us.
Thank you.
So, I think that we need to go back to the school and these folks and go, okay, what's really the nuts and bolts of what we minimum have to do to keep the pool running? I know, I'm not trying to say Band-Aid, but, okay, infrastructure, we got some pump issues, they said, okay, let's really look at that, let's look at the maintenance to make sure we're staying on top of it, so we don't have the algae problem, that's just not paying attention to the pool.
I was in attendance to that meeting too, Mr. Swift, you remember, it it came down to if you touch one, you touch all, so meaning if you.
It triggered, yeah.
If you did one of the required repairs, you were required to do all of them, is what it is.
They trigger each other, yeah.
You know the very thing that we, as Building Planning Department, enforce upon, you know, residents all the time? Well, it cuts both ways.
Right.
You do one thing, it triggers about another twenty things.
First of all, guys, let me remind you something, the rules are made by us, and the rules can be modified by us.
Hmm.
So, well, the idea of touching one, you touch them all, that's not totally accurate. What you look at in a situation, any damaged properties or swimming pools, is you look at the things that are health and safety issues first, and those are the ones that are your priorities, because you don't want anybody hurt, anyone poisoned, or any of that garbage. Once you get past that, you look at the rest of the infrastructure, if it's functional and works well, you make accommodations for those things. This crap about you got to do one for all or nothing is garbage.
That was just a statement.
No, I'm just saying, it's just garbage. I mean, if this community wants things to happen, they have to bend and flex a little bit. There are ways to deal with things like this without bending over and jamming two million dollars down your throat. That's just insane. So, if this is a really important issue and the community truly wants it, I believe it's manageable, but we need somebody to go in there that's willing to look at it from that perspective, not the one that we got with the four million and the two million, because it's doable. It just needs to be addressed in a way that we want it, what can we do to do it? Let's try to use some common sense.
If I could, if I could give a little information, that might help.
Sure.
Of course, I'll be, I'll look into whether what code violations actually do apply or don't, I'll look into that and get those answers. The the swimming fo- pool facility agreement was for thirty years, so there's only eight years left. I mean, only, depends how you look at it, but but there's eight years left, going to Councilmember Bellinger's point, maybe the minimum to keep this up for the rest of the agreement, and then after that, it's.
Out of use.
Right, now, the agreement does allow for negotiations for an early ter- uh, for an early termination, I could see that happening if the school district also just does not have the funding to keep this going, and it's, um, something that just can't happen, in which case, probably discussions regarding terminating the agreement altogether and that pool being closed is going to be appropriate. There will be, of course, discussions as to what percentage we have to pay for closing the pool, but, um, I'll look into the code viol- uh, the code violation issue, just wanted to let you know there's eight years left on the agreement, and then maybe we could see what the public has to say.
I think what's important here too, though, is Peter's point about how many people actually use this thing. I mean, I don't want to sound like a elitist, and it, because some people own pools, which I don't, but some people do, I don't want anyone to think that, you know, we're trying to cut anybody thing, anyone out of it, but at the same time, you do have to look at those things as well.
Yeah, you know, it used to be, you know, the city pool was open for, you know, the the summer, and you would go, yeah, or year-round, and I would be more interested, because I I look at that pool like this should be an asset to the school, this this should be a thing where we have a, we have a swim team, we have a water polo team. If there's any way, and that wouldn't be an issue, this would be an issue if the pool was built to the right spec.
If they wanted a swim team or anything else, they wouldn't have done the pool the way they did it the first time.
Well, I don't.
That's a fact.
I, that's so long, I don't think any of us can even look back and figure it out, but I would be, I would be interested in finding out, is there any way that we can, you know, fix the pool and make it to where it'll be utilized for swimming teams or water polo teams, rather than just say, let's close the pool.
That's a remodel.
I know, but that's better than totally closing it, I think.
I guess my question for the school would be, if there was enough interest at the school.
Well.
To have a swim team or water polo team, they'd create one and and work around the fact that they're all away games.
There you go.
They're all away meets.
What?
If there was that much interest in a sport, if I saw that development, I think we could be talking a little different, but in the last twenty years, who has decided to have a swim team and go, we have enough interest to have a swim team, we're okay with away meets, let's put it on the board, and we're part of the TVL, let's do this? I don't see that.
You know what, our rec department had a swim league for several years, and ironically, we would practice there, but we'd have to go to other places for our swims, you know, so.
That's not uncommon for a lot of communities that don't have the pool.
And they had, they had, did mention in the meeting that it's, they don't have a lot of volunteers for that, um, and and that's hard to fill when you're looking for coaches and teachers and people to maintain practices and teams and such, and they didn't, they haven't had people interested in that over the years.
So, that means the remodel's a waste of money.
Well, let's, let's sum this up. The bottom line is, it doesn't look like there's a whole lot of interest in it, we don't have the money to do the things they want to do. If we decided we have enough interest to make the repairs, I think that's probably doable, provided we pick and choose and understand that we're not going to do all the stuff they ask for because we can't.
Right.
So, if we can get past that, huh, that's fine, otherwise, it's going to go, it's going to go belly up.
And here's what I would suggest, I went to the last meeting, I saw what I saw, you know, I asked a lot of the questions that are being asked tonight, um, and I've, you know, reached the conclusions that I've reached. What I would suggest is, I, Dominique, I'm, I'm sure you can tell us when the next, uh, school board meeting, and I would suggest maybe a couple, the other council members, go to the next meeting, talk about this very same subject, because that's where the rubber meets the road, that's where you're talking to school board members, that's where you're talking to school district officials, and I'd highly advise, you know, if we want to try to meet, get a meeting of minds, head to that meeting.
Why don't we bring a professional to the meeting who knows about pools? Who can answer questions and tell us.
We can do that too, we can do that.
If I can talk to Mr. Bruquette, maybe he'll send one of his men over, or even himself.
Is the s- is the school obligated to have an annual certification on that pool or anything like that that's inspected in any way, shape, or form for safety requirements?
I'm not absolutely sure.
As far as inspections of the facility, I'm just curious.
I could find out on the trail.
And it passes, so what are we talking here?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look, and I'd have to inquire on that.
I think the the busiest time the pool had was pre-COVID, all of the daycares, you know, Country Kids and I think Learning Tree, I I don't know, they would bring their kids over and they would pack the pool, and it would be an amazing time, and I think it does get utilized, I mean, that's an amazing, I think they would go two days a week, the there, there is a need, and and just the fact that, oh, there's not enough need for swim lessons, sometimes you need to create that opportunity for a interest to be developed, and while I'm not in favor, and I don't think anybody can afford a four million dollar renovation just to make it, you know, ADA compliant or or whatever we have, I I don't know, at this point, it's, this is a tough one, you know, I I hate the idea of closing it, or, you know, or just, or just sticking out eight years and then going, eh, it ain't going to happen, I mean, there's, there's got to be a better solution here.
We have decades of history that we've provided swim lessons to the community here, and I'd like to keep that if we can, let's find a, you know, like we talked about, see what's required, what's not, can we make it work?
Yeah.
Nobody's got two million dollars, but maybe we can come together with, you know, six, eight hundred thousand between the two of us.
But it's not respons- it's not responsible for us as city council or the school district who's in charge of that to can continue a program that loses money every year, it's It's not responsible for anybody. And, you know, I know, but it's, we, this, I think, is a, is a real issue because we're talking about ultimately closing the pool. And you, you can think about the backlash, you know, and it just feels like we're losing an amenity. You know, you're in a small town, you're like, oh, you used to have a community pool. Now you don't have one anymore, what happened, you know?
Well, let's, let's move on, guys. We got the general idea what we have to do, let's, uh, move it on. So we're going to try to attend the meeting.
We need to hear from the public first.
I know, I'm going to get there. I know we're going to get by, I tried though. Uh, the thing is, we pretty much have talked it out to the point, we got a basic idea what we're dealing with here. Now we'll open up to the public, if somebody'd like to come up and speak regard, with regards to the issue, you're welcome to. If there's anyone in TV land or radio or phone land, you can do it too. Just have your name, please.
Danny Fox, fifteen ten, Adriana.
Thank you.
Clarify for me about the agreement, if you would, Mark.
Sure.
What does that agreement say, that the city's obligated to thirty-one percent?
Correction, so, correct. So essentially, back in two thousand when there was a remodel since the city entered into agreement with the school district.
Yes.
It's, uh, not too long, probably about eight pages long. Discusses, um, design and construction, splitting the cost of design and construction, uh, splitting the liability if there was a lawsuit concerning it. Uh, and it all comes down pretty much to that split where the city is responsible for thirty-nine percent of whatever comes in regarding the pool.
Well, thirty-nine percent of either one of those.
Substantial.
And so what happens if the city refuses to, uh, participate?
Well, then we would be in breach of this agreement, but, so there's, just like as if the school district decided to, let's say, close it without even confer, conferring with us, then the city would indicate that, hey, they're in breach and, and have some discussions.
So whatever plan that you choose is going to have to pay thirty-nine percent, correct?
Essentially.
Okay.
Uh, that's the short.
Yeah. But Mark, by the same token, if the school district doesn't have funding and we do, they're in breach.
Right, I think it's no, that's the big, that's what's happening here is the beginning of that discussion is what to do and how to go forward with it.
All right.
Briefly on the funding question, do we have the funding and where would that funding come out of?
I don't know what, wait a minute, we don't know how much we're going to do yet, so we couldn't answer that question.
Well, I know, but I got a feeling.
What bucket of information is the question?
I got a feeling we do.
All right, well, let's, uh.
I got one last question. What's, you said there's, what's the early termination of that agreement? What are the stipulations of that? We buy out of it or?
There is, uh, there is no, referencing early out, there is discussion of if both parties agree, we can terminate early. I did read in the event of early termination, oh, correction. At the end of this agreement or its early termination, district shall purchase city's interest in all of the above facilities except the waiting pool and restroom facility. District shall have the option of purchasing the restroom facility. If district fails to exercise this option, the city may remove the facility. Um, provided it leaves the district's property in a safe condition and so forth. So at the, actually at the end of this, it's saying, they're supposed to pay us out if we're done and we're not going to continue to have an agreement with them.
Yeah.
They're probably saying, fine, city, you're not going to use our pool. But they actually, and then there's a provision in here regarding what is the value, what do they have to pay us, which is pretty much, you know.
This, this seems like a really, really bad agreement from the outset to me right now because the, the, the only person who benefits or the only party who benefits from this is the city when we operate the open swim and the swim lessons. I'm not, I'm not aware of the, the school benefiting at all from, they don't do PE classes out there, to my knowledge.
Every once in a while, I, I believe they had mentioned two weeks at the beginning of the school year and two weeks towards the end of the school year.
You let everybody go swim?
Yeah, about a month of use when it's warm and then after that.
Yeah, I don't know. This, this needs to be discussed because this is not in the interest of the city at this point. And, you know, it could be, it could have been a wonderful arrangement and things could have been working great, but they're just not. So something's, something's got to happen here.
What was the original build cost? Is it in the contract?
No.
Okay, just curious.
Most of them don't need, by the way.
I know, just curious for the value.
Uh, correction, there was, hold on. I was just handed it before, so. There's a table here, hundred percent of the waiting pool referencing twenty-one thousand four hundred. Additional cost for the extended pool depth from twelve to thirteen feet was three thousand nine hundred. Anchorage for a three meter dining board was fifteen hundred. Um, there's a chart, the total cost was seven hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred and forty-four. This was back in, again, two thousand. And the district.
It's five times, it's almost six times as much.
So this, this contract referenced, the district paid four hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred eleven and the city paid two hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and thirty-two and change.
Somebody should have lost their job on building that pool, man.
Well, back then, money was worth more. Okay, so we're going to table this and come back to us later on. There's nobody on the phones that wanted to speak, I don't think, I never heard anybody. So I'm assuming we can wrap this up and make a decision on looking into it and meeting with the school district and then what? Come back to the council and try to figure out where we're going?
Yeah, so, uh, Mark had mentioned looking into those code violations and finding out which ones apply, which ones don't. Um, if council wants me to, I can also get an estimate from our inspector. Um, an estimate for now on how much it would cost to do their own inspection on the pool if that's just an estimate at this time. I, yeah, I'm not sure, that's why I said estimate, I won't, I won't move forward with anything.
I'm going to reach out to Bruquette Pools, I know them personally, they're good people. Maybe they'll take it as a charitable situation where they can come out, at least give us an accurate estimate of what it is that has to be done.
Yeah, I, the last thing I would say is, I, I, I want to know what the, the, the school district wants to do. They, is this what they want to do? They want us to, to pay this certain amount or is this just their estimate? Have they actually said, we want to do this to the pool?
Um, no, they have expressed that they have a lot of needs and other projects at their location.
It sounds like they want to focus on the track.
Specifically the track, yes. The track gets much more used, it's used year round and that's what they've emphasized. They, they, they expressed to us how, how difficult it would be to get, uh, you know, to put money, money towards a pool when they, they need that money for a facility that's actually being utilized.
This is what I'm getting. I'm getting that the school district and the school board doesn't want to put any money into this thing. And I'm getting from me and probably everybody up here that we don't want to put any money into this thing. So with that being said, I don't know, this, this ain't looking good for the, the pool.
Again, the two school board meeting members at that meeting, that's the direction they were heading into as well. After a good glance at this, and I would suggest to the council, take a look at this, you know, as well. Just, just try to digest and I know there's an awful lot, just to get a feel for what we're all up against. And I think these are all great ideas, you know, talking to Bruquette, see if there's any way we can whittle anything down. Uh, yeah, but that doesn't look great at the moment.
No.
They don't have any, uh, money set aside, no planning for replacement, repair costs or anything like that.
Not that we're aware of.
So I think that's, is part of the conversation. If it's going to be a low dollar patch job to keep this thing functional, to keep it going for, you know, free swim and swim lessons, then you figure out a way how to start funding the repairs and replacements down the road. So if they're open to that and we're open to that, you know, we're, we're pretty used to doing that around here now.
That's a good idea.
How urgent does it have to be done?
There we go, there we go. All right, so.
And then just a reminder that our next meeting with them is next Thursday, the fourteenth at eight AM at the school district office. And so if anybody else is interested, I know Councilmember Swift joins us, there is another space open because they do have two board members present.
I would really like.
They always encourage a second.
Okay, I'm not going to go to this one. I really like to see two other council members go to this one because there's a lot of passion on this topic and I think that it would behoove everybody if, if a couple of the other gentlemen were, were to be able to make it, I think that would really help an awful lot.
What's the date, April, uh, fourteenth?
Thursday, the fourteenth, eight AM. If you come here five to eight, I'll drive you. Because we'll all be carpooling. It'll, it's typically Chief and I, um, and then Robert meets us there and then Justin as well, Justin goes as well.
I won't be here next week.
Okay, so just Justin and I, so if you want to carpool with us to the meeting.
And that's at eight AM, right?
Eight AM at the school district office.
I'd like to get some grand for an estimate.
Okay, I'm going to try to make it, I'll let you know.
Okay. You want me to send you a reminder? You want me to send you a reminder?
Yeah, yeah, yes, please, yeah, thank you.
No problem.
I'll try it.
Yeah. When we start working, right? Eight AM.
Okay.
All right, we're moving on to matters presented from the audience. We've tried everybody else out to know who you want to speak, so we're moving on. Here we go. Matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city on any item that is on the agenda at the time it's called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the authority of the city council. Each speaker is limited to maximum five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. The determination of whether an item is within the authority of the city council is a discretion made by the mayor. Okay, so is there anybody out there this evening that'd like to get up and talk about anything? We don't have anybody busting the door down. How about online? Do we have anybody online or on the phones? Don't have that either. Okay, so since there's nobody who wants to talk about it, then we're going to move on to administrative matters. Discussion of funding for the future state, uh, skate park. All right, staff?
I'll take this one.
Oh, yeah. This was requested.
Okay.
So, uh, Peter and I had met with a couple of members of the, uh, the skate park, the foundation board, Mike Slipes and Tom Murphy. We talked to them about coming up with a budget and then approaching Dreamland, the builder that they had been working with to get, uh, uh, get some firm numbers, see what the, uh, skate park would look at, uh, would look like if we had a, uh, set budget. Uh, they're, they've had conversations with Dreamland. Dreamland is absolutely able to scale this, uh, the skate park down to the budget. Um, so we're at the point now where we need to kind of make a determination about how much we're willing to earmark for the skate park and, uh, enter into an MOU. So I think we need some detail for the next meeting as far as what an MOU would look like. Um, it basically would be city funds and then those funds would be leveraged to take the funds that the skate park has raised, uh, to finish out the skate park. And my recollection is we were somewhere around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the, uh, projected in the rec fund. Adding the eighty-plus thousand dollars that the foundation has, we can look at a, a budget of about three hundred thousand dollars to make available for the construction of the skate park. That would be the, the target that I think, uh, would be, um, able to deliver the project and on a scale that's appropriate for the community and kind of meets the needs of what we're looking to do. So if we can move forward with that so that we can have maybe, uh, I think we would get to a point where it could be a vote of the council to earmark that funding or to guarantee that funding, uh, towards the skate park. I think, uh, I think we're ready for an MOU that can address that.
Yeah, I agree with Jeff. I was in the meeting, um, exactly what we talked about. Uh, the eighty thousand dollars has been ra, raised over decades from, you know, kids, like Jeff said, giving their lunch money and doing fundraisers. I mean, this is a thing that's got, it's got the community buy-in. They've done everything they, they can to raise money. I think there's, you know, there's, there's also other things we can do, but we need to see the city buy in on this. And we have, uh, the two hundred and twenty-four thousand. Uh, I'm in favor of earmarking two hundred and twenty thousand of that to go towards the skate park, uh, in an MOU, uh, combined with the eighty thousand that the Parks Foundation have, we'll put a budget of three hundred thousand. We build a skate park to that budget and we, we have the space, uh, we have the builder. Um, and so I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with this.
And based on our conversations also, the, one of the reasons why they went with Dreamland is because Dreamland will allow, uh, local contractors to assist and, uh, particularly with materials. So that we set a budget of three hundred thousand dollars, that budget, uh, may not reach that or the, the commitment from the, the city may not be that high. Once we actually have the, we're ready to break ground, the money is set aside. I don't know if it's an escrow account or if it, you know, is set aside and available for the, the builder to draw from. But it, um, it allows for donations, so we have people that can provide steel, we have people that can provide concrete. Uh, a lot of people are just kind of standing by, you know, waiting for this actually to, to take off. So, so we do have the ability, if we earmark, earmark that money from the city, we leverage the money that's available from the Park Foundation and now we're going to be able to leverage donations and materials and, uh, the labor is pretty much going to be from Dreamland since they know what they're doing and you want somebody that knows what they're doing to actually build, build the, uh, the park. But as far as the materials go, we're hoping that there will be some additional savings there, so.
Do we get to see some sort of a drawing of this?
Well, now, so the idea is, there, there's been a drawing, they paid for the, the rendition and the, uh, and they've got a, a design prepared. Um, but now it's taking that design and taking those features and making them fit our budget. So we have the footprint.
What is the current footprint now in terms of square feet?
Uh, it's ten thousand square feet.
So and what's the new one going to be?
It could still be ten thousand square feet, it's just whatever features they, they put on it.
We may pull some features out of it, I think, okay, that was my question.
Different features that are less expensive or they can add features, you know, that are more in line with what's happening out there. You know, you've got, this is probably the best year for fundraising, uh, from donations and people supporting the, the skate park. And I don't know if it has to do with it being a, an Olympic sport at this point, but there was a lot of interest and a lot of people that, uh, were very supportive of the, of the skate park. So, you know, based on what I've seen over the last few years and, uh, my involvement with the fundraising on it, uh, it, it is certainly something that this community has been supporting with their money out of their pockets, so.
Is this with the park, is there a usage for the BMX crowd? I know that that's been, uh, talked about a little bit, so that there's some features for those, those communities as well? Not just the skaters, correct?
Yeah, that's one of the, uh, one of the discussions they're having with Dreamland to, to make this, you know, primarily focused on, on skate use, but there are features that will work with BMXers. There's certain things you have to do because the BMX bikes will tear up the concrete if it's not done properly or not braced or steel, you know.
Steel edges or something, whatever the hell that works.
So there is some discussion about that, so, you know, we're, we're just targeting a dollar amount and it sounds like Dreamland can meet that, meet that target.
But, uh, so they haven't got to necessarily, we're going to scale down X amount, but.
Well, I think, uh, the number we've been talking about is based on our money and their money is three hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So they can go back to Dreamland and say, this is the budget and that, that's what they're working off of at this point, to try and present something.
Okay.
And just to let the council know, last time you asked if, to me to look into whether there's any way that this cannot be a public's work project, but just the amount of money that the city is putting in.
There's no way around it.
There is no way around it. I checked with our public finance people and we all just couldn't, couldn't figure a way around that. So it will be a public works project.
Oh, absolutely, prevailing wage.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Well, I think it's a beautiful project, I've seen the drawings, um, you know, it fits into our master plan, right? It's already been a part of something that we have designed and said, we want this. Uh, the buy-in is there, the fundraising has been there, um, we have the space and I think it's, it's the time, you know, the, the iron is hot, it's time to strike, it's time to move this thing forward.
And, and I agree and we're at that point now that a lot of things can, are not happening because people see that this is going to be, well, if it's, it's going to take you another ten years to raise the money to do this, they're not excited about committing anything. Once the funding is, is committed and is there, then you're talking about real dollars and a real timeline that you can go back to some of these, uh, material suppliers and say, hey, what are you willing to do? What can you do? So, so that's, I, I think that's, um, we're basically saying, worst case scenario from the city is the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars with the potential benefit of that being reduced.
Mm-huh.
Okay, so gentlemen, we're going to take it out to the public here and hear what they got to say.
So we have a question online there as well.
I'm sure there's going to be a few. All right, so anyone in the audience would like to speak on this matter? This is the time for you to come up and have your say. Just get your name.
Fifteen ten, Adriana. Good to be here, glad we're moving forward with the skate park. But first thing I'd suggest, after the former, the, the last item on the agenda, is to get a rock solid MOU memorandum of agreement or something in writing, lock solid. Because in fifteen or twenty years, if and when the skate park is built and the EFP dissolves, then it's going to be all on the city. So when they factor in this three hundred thousand, you have to factor in, uh, similar to the item that you, uh, talked with the school district. In the event there's some handicap issues, it needs to be demolished, it needs to be redone and this could be very well, uh, all on the city, so. Is this what the skate park, like, okay.
You're a builder, Mayor, this is, this is a picture or design. I cannot give to you a house, picture of a house, I'm just going to build this house for me. So, you know, how many two-by-fours, how, how many square feet, how many, this is, uh, that's the design.
Yeah, it's pretty neat looking.
Yeah. You want it, you can keep it.
Okay.
You can find them online, Dreamline, Dreamland. But my, but my point is, there's a lot to go before you move forward with three hundred thousand. I think the MOU is correct. And also the Escalon Parks Foundation. If, uh, Mark, you haven't seen the bylaws, then I would like for you to take a look at them and read them and get back with me and see what you think about them. So I know that, that the city's wanting the skate park because they are willing to donate the land. They spent just under twelve thousand to get, uh, five oh one C, uh, status, the state. And they gave up a lottery system, uh, every year to sell fireworks. I, I looked at some of the minutes back and the former, I think he's the former, uh, Escalon Parks Foundation president, said there is and they didn't do any more, uh, larger fundraising, is that they didn't want to take away from the locals that had doing that year after year. And I looked, read that and I heard it and I thought, well, when they were automatically given a fundraising venue without getting a lotto and that was given to the city, then it didn't really make sense to me. But I gave to, uh, I gave to, uh, Councilman Cromick, the website, Public Skate Park Development Guide. It's online, it's, uh, put together by Tony Hawk Foundation, Skaters for Public Skate Parks and the International Association of Skateboard Companies. You can go online right there and they can, they'll tell you more normally about what it's going to cost per square foot. They're going to ask you, if you go on there, is it going to be a transition skate park? Is it going to be a street plaza, is it going to be a combination? How holes the pit, uh, deep the pit going to be and what size will accommodate the population? So I hope whenever the design comes out, it'll be more than just a, a picture or a design and just see what the really layout is, that's. You need a set of blueprints.
Yeah.
Correct. This is conceptual drawing, which is, gives you a, a layman's view, tells you basically what you're looking at, hopefully when it's done. But you're right, there's a long road between this and getting it done, that's true.
And, and, and figure out the factor of the finished product, of the lighting, the, the electricity too there, the ADA, which I know I've heard for the last two years that they don't, uh, the president of the Escalon Parks Foundation doesn't think that ADA, they're not going to be doing that on their end. So I think, uh, outline specific MOU and agreement, what the city's going to do currently, during and after it's built out and no one is around to.
Well, this is going to be the city's obligation. If they're building it, it's their responsibility.
If they're building it, it's their responsibility from day one.
Correct.
So there's no way out of it, we're gonna have to maintain, I mean, that's just part of the deal, it's like anything else we do, I mean, it's ours.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there's other towns around us, Oakdale has a skate park, Riverbank has a skate park, Ripon has a skate park, they all have found a way to build a skate park and mitigate their liability or get the correct insurance. I am confident that our city attorney would, you know, advise us correctly on how to form an MOU, how to form a legal contract, what kind of insurances we need, there are ways to do this. It's another thing with the pool, right? If the pool was built to spec and we could hold races there and have water polo, if you build it, they will come, right, to borrow from a famous movie. If we, if they would have built the pool correctly twenty-one years ago, I guarantee, I'm not guarantee it, but we would probably have swim teams at Escalon, we would probably have water polo teams, the interest would be there. If we build this skate park correctly, make a nice facility, make a nice amendment to the town, people will utilize it, and it's gonna be a nice thing, and that's what we're trying to do right now.
So I think the question at hand tonight is, do we want to commit two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-four thousand out of the rec fund, right, for this?
If I, if I may, Mayor Swift, sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
Just to, since we've opened the public comment, let's get all the public ones before we go back to council discussion.
All right, is there anyone else out there like to speak on the matter?
There's a question online, right?
We did get a question online.
Okay, let's have the online participant, please.
And that is, what would be the timeline on the completion once the money is set aside?
I don't know, it's a good question. You'd have to ask Dreamline and ask them, I don't know.
Yeah, it gets still too early to figure that out.
Yeah, I, for some reason, forty-five days once they break ground is in my mind, but I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's accurate.
That'd be quick.
But I think it was, if we get the, you know, as we move forward, we're gonna be able to firm a lot of that information up. And it's just been, you know, without having a, a dollar amount set aside, because we have to have that money set aside in order for construction to start.
It's gonna be what time of season you start it too. You start that thing in winter, it'll be there for six months.
Right.
If you start it in the spring, it'll be four months, you start it in summer, you get about, you're gonna spend two to three months on it.
Yeah, so.
So I'm here, my question really is, will this, this is a completion for twenty twenty-two, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Realistically, yeah.
So it's not like five years down the road or anything?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
The, the biggest hangup is that you have to have the money ready to be drawn from by the contractor.
Absolutely.
And as soon as that money is there and available, they schedule their, when they're gonna come down here, they bring their crew down, and then they, they crank this thing out, get in and get it done.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Again, I apologize, Mayor Swift, for interrupting you, I think.
Councilmember, councilman.
Councilmember.
I apologize for interrupting.
You took my crown away, hell!
You gotta be respectful here, you know.
Ex-Mayor Swift.
Yeah.
Former Councilmember.
Councilmember.
There you go. You're going somewhere with this.
Yeah.
All right, is there any other questions online that we have or anything else? I'm telling, so bring it back to council for action.
Well, yeah, well, actually, a couple of things, this is coming out of the rec fund, okay, which ironically, everything we're talking about tonight is tied together, including the last topic, I almost wish the last topic was ahead of this one, because both this and the pool both have to do with money's coming out of the rec fund, of which is two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, okay? Which makes, what we talked about a while ago, you know, a bit of a dire situation too. So, we would essentially be draining that fund, okay, and that's okay. I'd see a lot of the things that we've done out of it, you know, playground rubber, Hogan bathroom replacement, of course, two hundred thousand's coming from us, repaying the community center, insulation, three backstops, of course, paying the property taxes on the two properties, a lot of stuff for our community comes out of the rec fund, you know, and of course, we have to subsidize the rec programs on top of that, okay? But it's one of those things out of communities we want to do for the greater good, because we're, you're, a lot of people, be it small children, older children, adults, they all benefit from this, from this source. Okay, is there any mechanism, do we have any mechanism right now, where do the money, where does the money come into this rec fund? And I see that, well, developer fees, okay, from twenty-one, twenty-two, seven, okay, seventy-two grand, all right, what I wanna, and then of course the crop revenues, which now we're gonna talk about later on tonight, about that, twenty-eight grand. And let's see, our, our main source is gonna be the crop revenues, now that's gonna dry up, all right? And so we do have some estimated developer fees in there, and that's gonna help. My concern with this fund and earmarking, basically draining it, for, for, frankly, a great cause, but don't get me wrong, I'm not against the skate park at all, my concern is, do we want to get to that point where we drain this fund down without any clear source of revenue to come in and regenerate it for any recreation programs? I'm not only thinking about the baseball or the community parks or the, you know, upkeep on the, the, your buildings, you know, that are recreated oriented, but I'm also thinking about the skate park itself. Do we have any real funding mechanism for the ongoing maintenance of that skate park? Is there a plan to, to, you know, if things need to be replaced down the road, to do that? Again, we just had another subject tonight, we were talking about the pool, and that's where we're at now, because twenty years ago, that didn't happen, and this is where we're at now with the pool. And my concern, be it skate park or skate park funding, or skate park maintenance down the road, or for any of these things, I just don't see a clear source of revenue coming in to replenish that fund anytime soon. If there was, totally different night, I, I would be ready to go for this, I just don't see it.
Let me, uh.
That's the only thing that really concerns me on this.
Okay, but comment, you say, you said the, the main revenue was our crop revenue, and it's not, it's developer fees of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So, let's, let's think a little bit down the, the line here, so we have our municipal services review that is supposed to be done in, you know, January or February, when?
End of the year, so.
Okay, end of the year.
So annexation should be completed somewhere in January.
Annexations, right, we're annexing different properties, we're talking about annexing in the Murphy's property, they want to build homes, so the way you get money to improve and build parks is through development fees primarily.
Mm-hmm.
And the only way you get development fees is if you develop in your town, and that is, you know, a, a difficult topic to talk about in this community or, or on this council, but that's where those monies come from. And we do have things in the pipeline with this municipal service review, with the different annexations, with the potential of building these, some more homes in town, that you could replenish those funds, you know, by a large amount, honestly, when you actually crunch the numbers. And so that's where that fund would get replenished from, not from crop revenues, not from crop revenues.
But, but the question is though, how much are we gonna be, I mean, can we depend on this figure? I mean, we're only what, four months into the new, uh, three months into the new budget period, you know, and so, I mean, again, if we had a development like that annexation going down the road, or the senior housing project going down the road, I feel a lot more confident that we have the funds coming back into this. You know, I just don't know, I just feel really uncomfortable with letting this fund drain down to nothing for X amount of time, one, two, four years, I don't know how long, we, none of us have a crystal ball.
Yeah.
You're right, ultimately, there will be more development in town, and ultimately, we will have the monies in this fund.
There has to be.
And ultimately, I think that at some point, we can very confidently, yeah, let's earmark three hundred thousand.
So another point would be, we have a reserve fund which is supposed to be maintained at thirty-three percent, if I'm not mistaken, and right now we're at thirty-nine percent, I believe, forty percent. So we have an excess amount of money in a fund that's considered our reserve fund, our savings.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you need to pull from that fund to maintain the parks, you are no, you're, you're not depleting what that fund is supposed to be maintained at a thirty-three percent, right? So there are, there's money we have.
And that question was asked a couple of years ago, and a few crawl is a very busy meeting at that meeting, and the vast majority of the people, at least who went to that meeting, did not want to have the council take that sub, to actually pull money out of our own reserves to be able to pay for this.
It's because they don't understand that we have forty percent and we're supposed to maintain thirty-three, so there's a seven percent margin that we are.
True, true, but push comes to shove, I think, at least for me, I would say, I would rather, if we needed to use that money, if we were in a dire situation, replace two, three police cars, I'd rather do that.
How far back do we need to go in this fund where the balance was under a hundred? I don't know, I see the budget there, I don't know how far back your history goes on this sheet, but I'm just curious, how far back do we go?
So seventeen eighteen, we dropped down to two hundred thousand, sixteen seventeen, we were at a hundred. We were at a hundred and ten, fifteen sixteen ninety-seven, fourteen fifteen ninety-four, I mean, and those were times where we basically had zero development going on in town.
For some part of reserve.
And, yeah, eleven twelve was fifty-eight.
I mean, what stimulated that a hundred and twenty-eight thousand developer fees? Was that those new homes right over here?
Finishing out a hundred and twenty-eight last fiscal year was Lear Village paying impact fees for his project and as well as finishing out Westwood Country.
How much is our current reserve?
I don't have that number.
We don't know what our current reserve is?
I don't, I don't have that number, the last time we discussed it, which I want to say was a few months ago, we're in the budget, it's in the, it was in the budget, which I forgot my budget by.
It's like one point five million.
Yeah, it's.
So what is seven percent of one point five?
It's up, it's up there.
Here, Peter, do your math.
But as you recall, in past budgets, we've been taking certain amounts of that, of that overage, you know, we, we collect thirty-three percent, and in past budgets, we've been moving that over to that amount that we owe for Calpers.
Hundred grand?
That we'll end up paying, yeah, the last time was like a hundred thousand, we moved over there in budgets. So we've been taking the interest that we gain off of the thirty-three percent.
Why don't we just leave the money where it's at? We need it.
There's another idea.
Because if, if nothing occurs and we don't need anything, we didn't move anything, we get more developer fees?
That's a good idea.
It's a wash.
There you go.
I wouldn't move money unless we needed it.
What I see is we possibly could have a cushion if we needed it.
Excuse me, is this still open and I burned my fire burning?
Burn some more, come on up, I don't care.
Yeah, Danny Fox, fifteen, ten, Adrian. As we talk about, the funding would come from, for a skate park, you're looking at about two hundred and twenty thousand, and Councilman Swift, I think, brings a good point, why would you want to deplete it? I have a suggestion, you could get all the money you wanted to build the skate park and get rid of a five hundred dollar a year bill to the city. You got six point three quarter acres right out here sitting, doing nothing, you're gonna be talking about it, how much money you're gonna be making in the next, put it on the market, get your plans together, sell it, go that direction.
Amen.
Then it goes your asset.
In regards, in regards to the building permits.
Business man.
It's about fourteen thousand dollars through the Parks and Recreation Fund per building permit, so, twenty, twenty, twenty-five houses, and that's about four hundred thousand, thank you.
Yeah, I feel a lot different, I mean, I think there's one of these years back here where the, the park and rec fund was sitting with five hundred thousand. I feel a lot better with that, I just, I, I just, I cannot go with a situation where, okay, yes, it's probably gonna come in, we probably will be okay, as long as nothing else goes wrong for a while, this'll probably, I just, I can't, I can't.
What is Murphy's development slated for, when's that gonna happen?
Depends if it's annexed, I would imagine, as soon as it's annexed.
We're anticipating the finishing of the MSR and annexation.
What's the timeline?
End of the year, so by January.
They're gonna be in the city limits?
Uh, yes, and then they, we're trying to coordinate with them that in that time period that they would apply for their annexation and it would all be taken care of.
Do they have an agreement with Florshim yet that's solid?
They don't, no.
So the land might come in, but they haven't got a builder guarantee yet because they haven't signed up?
Not yet, yeah.
Okay.
They want it to be so far before they purchase the land from the developer, from the property.
They want it to be in the city before they buy it.
They want to be in some type of agreement, and until it gets to a certain point, they're not, they're not signing at this point in time, yeah.
And that's what, seventy-five homes?
Seventy-five homes, what they're looking at, it has been over a year since we last talked to them about their idea, I know that if Florshim's been doing a lot of other types of housing developments all around us, and so that might change, they might have a different proposal.
And how much would we get, is that fourteen thousand dollars to the developer fees accurate?
Correct, right now it's about fourteen thousand for parks and recreation development.
Per household, as we build seventy-five development.
That'd be a million dollars.
That's where I was going with that, really quick, thank you.
So, so according to our last treasurer's report for August, the general fund reserve was at two million five hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred and three dollars, and that was from last meeting's treasurer's report.
That's about a change. It's pretty good. So, just to clarify a couple of things, the Parks Foundation was the brainchild of Henry Hesling when he was here as our city manager.
Correct.
He recognized that we did not have the staff or the resources to commit staff to moving forward on a skate park. So he decided that Park Foundation would be the right vehicle, BB and K put it together, established it, and then it was staffed, Henry, the city manager, has the opportunity to appoint somebody to it, and then other people are appointed. There have been some changes of the board makeup over the years, so they were, they were organized in order to try and go out and fundraise. The city was also not able to staff the fireworks booth without paying staff salary and overtime to staff it, and that was always a problem, so Henry had the idea that it would be better just to turn that over to the Park Foundation, the Park Foundation being designed to benefit the city. So he turned the fireworks booth over to the Park Foundation, they've been operating it ever since. So that, that particular booth was never in a lottery, it was always a, a city fireworks booth, the city function, but now we benefit by not having to pay the staff, the city staff, to staff it. So, there, it, it was, at the time, it looked like a win-win, the money that's been generated out of that fireworks booth has been deposited in the Parks Foundation for the benefit of the city, and specifically, the, the fundraising has been targeting a skate park, even going back as far as the, the genesis of Park Foundation and the reason why Henry thought that was the right vehicle to move forward on. So it's been in existence since about two thousand and eleven, and it's been moving forward as best they can with the limited fundraising that they can do, and that they've been able to raise the amount of money that they have is solely from community donations, and I think that speaks volumes to the community's continued interest in this project and the continued buy-in to get this park completed. They have tried, they have reached out to Tony Hawk's Foundation, they have reached out to Ron Dirdek, they have reached out to every potential grant that they can find that was available to them, they talked to grant writers, they have had grant writers look for grants, and each and every time, the median income for this community is too high, and we just do not qualify. We don't have the low-income areas that can generate, you know, interest in, in getting a grant here to do this. So this has solely been a, a function of the community support to raise the money that they have raised. You know, we, the location has changed, looking for the ideal location, trying to put it in a, a place that would be used by the, the community, we looked at Main Street Park, that seemed like a good viable location, we had an opportunity to try and buy Main Street Park, but by the time the railroad ever got back to us, the, the cost was prohibitive to buy that park land, so there was no need to invest Park Foundation money or city money into a piece of property that we didn't own. So then, we ended up doing a land deal to get rid of the property that was slated to be the Cabral Regional Park off of Brennan and Ulri, that came to fruition when the Paulson property came available, we were able to, to work out a deal to acquire Paulson's property, which is just north of the existing Hogan and his park, that seemed to be like the right location to have additional park land to grow, and as part of that, and Danny was on the council at the time, there was a push to make sure that we had a community-involved master plan for that nineteen acres, to try and designate what it is that the community wants, what they'd like to see, and what we can do to identify, you know, the location of the skate park and other facilities that we're lacking or in need of for the community. So this has been a long road to get to this point, and the, the history is, is probably lost on some people or never known by some people because it's taken so long to get, to get to this point. But the one consistent, from the very beginning, has been the. But the one consistent, from the very beginning, has been the desire to have a skate park. And I think we're at that point where there is money that can be earmarked for it. We have, uh, the potential for additional developer fees coming in based on the municipal services review, the potential for annexation. So, you know, that, I think we're at a good point to move forward on it. Uh, with the MOU, uh, that will firm up some of the details. That will allow the, the builder to give some firm, uh, plans that can be used to go to the material providers to see what they are willing to do. So that we can actually get a, a solid number on this. There are options we have for, for money, selling property, uh, looking at the reserve. Do we need the, the reserve that we have? Can we utilize some of that money for some other projects as well? And then you look at our budget, uh, the Parks and Rec Fund. There aren't necessarily line items for maintenance of the parks there. But we certainly could come up with line items moving forward. So as developer impact fees come in, we can designate some of that money for future repairs and, and, uh, upgrades that, that may be necessary, whether it's the skate park or Sanchez or the, the Hogan and his park or any of the other structures that we have out there. So certainly, there's things that we can do to, moving forward, to make sure that we have addressed those issues. And I think we're, it's a good discussion, and it's setting us up to make sure that we're successful in this project, so. That's what I got to say.
Okay, so, we've had all kinds of talk about this thing, where do we go from here?
Make a motion.
What would that motion be?
Uh, I would move that the City of Escalon designates two hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of the park fund to go towards a skate park with an MOU with the Skate Parks Foundation, um, to, to move forward.
Okay, the MIU is again, what is it, what is it, the tail?
Memorandum of Understanding.
Yeah, so we're gonna, if we move forward on this, we're gonna go out and we're gonna get everything put into a contract form, and it's gonna pretty much solidify what we're gonna be involved with in terms of the value of the job and the limitations of the cost of this job, so we won't exceed them, or how's that gonna work?
Right, so it sounds like the, the council's kind of earmarking this money. So everybody knows it's, the council's on board and it's going forward. I would draft an MOU with discussions with the foundation and bring it back to this board, uh, to this council for discussion and approval or amendment as needed. And then the, the council can, and with the Parks Foundation, approve, modify, whichever with the MOU, and then after the MOUs, uh, approved by both sides, then I think would be proper. The next step would be then going out for an RFP or however the council actually wants to go out and get that firm estimate or firm numbers for a scaled-down park.
With that, that RFP that we, they currently have an individual or a company that's interested, would it be limited to him?
Him or her? No, I, I have to go back and look at the procurement policy for the city. But whether we can do just a sole source, one, we don't even go out for an RFP, if that's what's being asked, we need to do an RFP. Or can we just, once this is all approved by both the foundation and the, um, uh, the city council, can we just go ahead and sign a contract with a particular contract?
That was my question, I didn't understand how that works.
I have to go back and look.
There had been some discussion about that. You know, if this becomes a partnership, a joint enterprise between the city and the foundation, you know, if that's an option, I, I don't remember what the basis was, but it sounded like it was that Dreamland, they can move forward with Dreamland as the builder.
Yeah, I don't care.
But it's, that certainly needs to be part of the MOU.
Does the city have a requirement on these situations in terms of how many people have to get the bid? Or is it, can, I know like the high school, they have a deal there, anywhere five thousand dollars, they have to have X amount of bids. So I don't know how that works.
Yeah, we have a policy on those.
Is that same thing?
Same thing, yeah. We have certain amounts that have been set.
So in other words, if we did get to the point where we're moving forward, just we'd have to get three estimates, is that the idea?
Um, it depends where the, where the budget falls in, how much the cost would be, so.
What's our limit? What's our limit before we go out to bid? I mean, before we have to get multiple bids?
I wanna say for three bids. I, I'm not absolutely sure, I'll have to double-check on the policy. I don't ever spend that much money out of my department, so I've never had to.
Okay, but we need to know that, too.
Yeah, we'll definitely get that information to you.
Because the Dreamlands have been busting their tail to help us, and then all of a sudden you put her out the back door, that's not cool. So we need to know that, too, so.
Well, there's advantages in there, in there, from what?
I wouldn't say I'd be, we'd be including a particular contractor in the MOU. The MOU is focused on shoring up any inconsistencies and making sure everybody is, um.
On the same page?
On the same page and has the same expectations of exactly what is the foundation going to be doing from, you know, from the day after it gets signed to five years down the road.
And also, there's gotta be a sinking fund set up probably somewhere. Because you're gonna have to have money to keep it up.
Right, but as, as, as you indicated earlier, Mayor, this is gonna be a city project with a, on city land that's gonna be eventually all, all city.
All parks.
All city responsibility.
Part of parks.
Correct. That's.
But even in, within the city, we have funds for different assets, we have.
Correct. And that'd be.
Just another asset, and I'm just curious if that's gonna be written in the MO, in my O, whatever it is we're doing.
Well, uh, I could, yes, the short answer is yes. I could see it's gonna be a, a bit more complicated because we do have a fundraising arm, that's the foundation.
Sure.
And, again, it was brought up, what happens if they cease to exist? What's the expectations for that foundation continuing or not continuing? And it's gotta kind of be in the MOU with those contingencies of the future.
And my, and just for clarity, my understanding is the, the board continues. And they, their intention is to continue with this. This skate park is just one, uh, project. It's been kind of the, the driving force for the fundraising. But after that, there's no intention to, to shut down and walk away from it. So there, the fundraising would continue with the idea of funding other projects or a sinking fund or whatever it may be, so that's.
To answer your revenue question a little bit?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Are the members of this commission you're on, are they elected or are they appointed, how's that work?
They're, uh, my recollection is the city manager selects one, and then there's, uh, there, the certain number of them vote to appoint, uh, the other members.
And what's the terms on their, their appointments?
Uh, I don't remember.
We don't know, okay. Just curious how it works.
They've had a few original members have gotten off, um, and then they've been replaced by vote.
Okay.
There's a, it's all in the bylaws, there's a structure to it. And, and the other question I have is if we're, we're committing two hundred and twenty thousand dollars or the, the, we're indicating our intent is to, to provide two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of city funds, not necessarily coming out of the, the rec fund, but if we find other sources that we wanna use to fill that two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we have that option based on the, the MOU being adjustable, amendable, things like that.
However you want to make the motion, amend, amend the motion or just, I, sure.
So we're gonna try and amend the motion, here we go.
All right.
Try it again.
All right, let's go for it. I would make a motion that the City of Escalon earmarked two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to go towards the construction of a skate park in a memorandum of understanding with the Parks Foundation to be, with the details to be worked out and the contract to be negotiated and worked out with, between the city attorney and the Parks Foundation, um, moving forward.
Second.
All those in favor?
Point of discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't mind, yeah, I don't have any problem with the MOU, I think it's a great idea. There are a couple of things that kind of spooked me just now, if we're talking about maybe including a couple other funding sources without having those funding sources identified. Will this MOU come back to us, or is this a, is this it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's coming back before council for.
And keep in mind, my biggest issue is just timing. I don't like to be spending down a fund and then hope for the best I will be able to, you know, things will work. I think, uh, I think the Parks Foundation's done a heck of a job, I think the skate park's a great idea. My only issue, and I hate to be the guy to wanna tap the brakes, is just timing. Timing, timing, timing. I'd like to see some money in there, or at least a dependable funding source that I can count on coming in before I ran a fund down, that's all.
What's a normal time period to get an MOU ironed out, shall we say?
There is no normal on that, it could, it could, there's.
Do we get this, uh, coming back to us, the O and O, the next meeting?
I would, I would say it's gonna take about a month of discussions back and forth. So I would think not the next meeting.
How about the second, oh wait?
Not later than the first meeting in November?
We will do our best to get a draft MOU by that time, but certainly it'll come back whether it's done or not to give you an update.
Okay.
Okay, so back, we had the, uh, we had the, uh, the motion and we had a second. And we had Mr. Swift add something at the end here. So we're going back to the, all those in favor?
Hold on.
Whoops?
Just to be, so as far as the funding sources go, we're, we're committing two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. MOU is gonna be written up. We're gonna get it back, we're gonna be able to amend, make changes, give input, and we can identify those funding sources. If not the rec fund, we will be able to, to, uh, the council will approve the, whatever those other funding sources may be to meet that two hundred and twenty thousand.
Correct, because the motion was just to earmark it, so basically, this can be withdrawn. So let's say the MOU can't be done, or the council doesn't like the terms. The council at that point could move to unearmark or remove that earmarking of that and put it, leave it back as for use for anything.
It's just another step in the right direction, that's all we're doing. Okay, so, again, we had the motion, we had the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
We got one nay, okay, good enough. Let's move on to, um, let's see, ch-ch-ch-ch-ch, where are we? We're on discretion options for the city-owned property located Escalon Balota Road and St. John, Escalon Balota Road is not over there, that's Santa Fe, isn't it?
There's two different properties.
St. John and Catherine, and then the eighteen acres on, on Escalon Balota. It's Escalon Balota because it's outside of city limits.
Okay, I got it, I got it, okay, got it.
Sorry.
All right. Got it, two properties, excuse me.
All right, so this item is discussion on those areas that we have current orchards, uh, leases on. The city entered into a short-term agricultural lease agreement with Tilbury Farms back in two thousand and eighteen for the area known as the city's future community parkland, which is a nineteen-acre property located on Escalon Balota. This lease expires November first of this year. This property also has a dwelling with tenants that currently pay a monthly rent of fifteen hundred and fifty-one dollars per month. The twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one property taxes, uh, this, uh, for this fiscal year were ten thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. And the irrigation costs are around five hundred dollars annually. To date, the crop payments that we've received on, which were, this is the first payment, where you typically get two payments, is approximately seventy-six hundred dollars. And that is set to expire. And then we also have St. John Road and Catherine Road, uh, which is six point four acres, also outside of city limits, city-owned property, short-term agricultural lease agreement that is, was executed back in two thousand and nineteen and has since been extended twice, once in two thousand and twenty and then in two thousand and twenty-one. This is the one we've been extending, extending annually. Also expires November thirtieth of, of this year. The property taxes on this property are approximately twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, and the irrigation costs are around two hundred and fifty dollars annually. The crop payments that we've collected on this property, which is the first payment, is a thousand twenty-two dollars. As we've discussed over the years, both of these properties, almond trees are at the end of their lifespan, and there have several trees missing throughout the properties. Tilbury Farms has indicated that they're not interested in extending the current short-term leases, but would be interested in long-term leases, which are typically twenty-plus years. If the council is interested in long-term leases, uh, staff can come back after negotiating it with the, uh, leasing and then bring it back to council for a review and approval. In the event that the long-term leases are not desired, uh, we can discuss other options.
Well, I'd like to know more details in terms of what the long-term is and what the benefit of the, uh, city is in that long-term agreement, opposed to other options.
And so that would all be negotiated, and so we'd have some time where we could, uh, come back. Like, currently, we have the, the two leases that we have, um, as Exhibit A and Exhibit B. A is for Escalon Balota, B is for the property at, uh, St. John and Catherine. Currently, right now, we receive a, a percentage of, of the amount. We're not, we're not getting all of it, obviously, and that's, and that's subject to negotiation.
Well, it's hard to negotiate on the one, on Mariposa because, or Balota, whatever it is, because the uncertainty of what we're gonna do with some of that land if we decide to put some senior housing over there. So that's gonna be a tough one to negotiate. Now, the six point four acres out there, that'd be a little easier. And then again, the question is whether or not we're gonna make any money on it. So then the next thing people are gonna say, why don't we sell it? And everybody wants to sell it, and that's fine, here's the problem. You're taking your asset and you're getting rid of it. You no longer have an ability to make money on something because it's gone. It's sold, it's over, but if this council wants to do that, that's on them, I won't go for it. But, just to remember, that should be a mechanism for us to make money, not one-time expenditure and it's gone.
Well, Mayor Alzma might add to that, not only, you know, is it an asset, but it's also something that you, down the road, for some reason, need to borrow for whatever reason, it's also collateral.
That's right.
So you don't minimize those.
Well, it's an asset, and that's what assets are, they give you options in financial situations you don't normally have. Once you liquidate them, you're done. So I would just caution the council to be, be very cautious in what you wish for in some of those things.
And may I also, Mayor Alzma, regarding the property on Escalon Balota, you know, my thought is, you're right, I mean, it's a little more vague, okay? How much room will a skate park bite off? How much room will a senior facility bite off? What would be the minimum amount of acres that the, uh, the tenant would be willing to go into a long-term lease with? Ten year, ten acres maybe? I don't know.
And then the other thing you have to ask yourself, in twenty years, are we gonna wait twenty years to do anything with that property? Is that reasonable? I, I don't know. So we'd have to investigate that and figure out, okay, are we willing to commit to twenty-eight, twenty years? And then, uh, that's just the way it is? Or do we have plans in the next ten years to do something with that land? We need to think about that, too, I don't have an answer on that.
Well, and, and we need to come to decision on it, because for a point of historical reference, we started this discussion three years ago, because the leases are almost up. Had we gone into that three years ago, those leases would have obviously been in the third leaf already, and you would have already seen, you know, um, small crop, but you would have already seen a small crop. So by this time next year, now you're getting, just beginning to get into your better-producing years, which again, related to the last subject, would be a revenue source into the recreation fund. That could become more dependable over time. So that's why I think that, you know, again, if we don't, we, if we, we can debate this for another ten years. But right, what are the odds of us using all nineteen of those acres for our needs, other than, um, you know?
I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know. So my thought is, especially, I think he was willing to do a buyback, which basically is insurance policy. You know, that, yeah, would it be cheap to buy the land back if we decided to do something with the rest of those nineteen acres? Let's say we split ten off and had them long-term leases? Would that cost us money at that time? Yes, I, yes, it would be. That's an insurance policy that, again, for the grower and for us.
We have a master plan, do we not, of the park, the future of that park out there? Don't we have a master plan somewhere?
Correct, we have a master plan.
We should revisit that master plan and look at that thing and try to think about what this town's gonna be like in a few more years, and whether or not we could do some of it or any of it. And if we can, then we need to preserve that property that we're gonna need. And then the other ask, uh, question of course is, and these developments we're having, like we're having a possible seventy-five homes built, some of that money can be moved into some of that accelerated park improvements. So I mean, those are things, we got a lot to look at here. It's not gonna be a slam dunk, easy choice.
Well, and when we were talking about it a couple of years ago, the, the terms of the long-term lease for the buyout was, it was a deal breaker.
Yeah.
So, you know, going with a short-term lease has allowed us this flexibility when these projects have come up. You know, we just had the, the report on the connection with SSJID. You know, now we've got a piece of property that we can use for the connection, you know? And it's not gonna cost us for, for that property, and it became a manageable project, so. And then talking about, uh, the potential for senior housing out there based on ideal location for, you know, its, uh, proximity to the community center, and then the skate park and the parking overflow area. That frontage area along Escalon Balota Road is being, is becoming very useful to us for some of these projects I'm moving forward. So, yeah, we identify, you know, how much of that frontage is gonna be dedicated to these projects going forward, and then you've got the remainder of it to, to see what you can lease it for. And if my recollection is correct, there was somebody in that area that was interested in, in purchasing. in, in purchasing a portion of those 19 acres. So that's, you know, that's another consideration.
The nut, what's the gentleman that owns?
Rusi.
Thank you.
You got him.
Rusi, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of things to look at. What's the value of the property? Is there a combination of selling a portion of it? And in exchange for that sale, also having a lease with that same buyer, you know, with the, the understanding that that frontage is going to be tied up, you know, or utilized by the city? You know, the likelihood of us ever being able to build out 19 acres is, is long-term, if ever, right?
Well, we really don't need all of it.
Right. So now, how do we best utilize that to fund, like you're saying, funding other portions of that park area, you know, building out different facilities that we need, replenishing, you know, the rec fund, or having a sinking fund that it's actually allowing us to keep and maintain and improve all the other park area around the county.
With, with regards to Peter's idea of the grand meeting in January, it might be a great time to bring all that up out there and let people have a look at the future of our community and see what the deal is.
The only issue is the lease, when does the lease have to be?
November.
Negotiated, so.
It expires. I'm, I'm anticipating, and I could check with them, because you guys have brought up some good points about a minimum acreage that he would want to accept, minimum number of years on the lease. You typically see 20, and that's because he's investing into the property with new trees, irrigation, all of that.
Lost some fortune.
And so, yeah, that's, that's why it, he wants that long-term. And so, we, we could check with him on that type of information and, and find out. It seems like with, he would probably need to know by the end of the year.
How about this? Is the only option?
I can check with that as well.
Other than, I mean, is the only option trees? I mean, can't we look at other options, maybe? Maybe we could look around and see if some sort of.
So we, we tried to do that a few years ago. I remember Tammy was looking into other things that, like Rippon was doing and stuff, and it was all minimal. They weren't, they weren't making any more money.
There's not so much the money.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't.
Our situation is this.
The use wasn't.
We need to have the liquid, liquid, make it liquid, so in case we wanted to do something, we're not tied up forever.
Yeah.
Well, you can also stage that, though.
Yeah.
You know, this has to be liquid right now, because we've got projects that we're going to fund and we're going to move forward on.
Right.
This portion, eh, you know, we've got some time. We can get around to it, you know, we can do a 10, 15-year lease, 20-year lease.
What comes back is the acreage, how much acreage you have.
Yeah, and then, and then this other section here, we're probably never going to get to that, or can we sell a portion of that to fund some other things right now and still maintain our overall?
Yeah. I'm not in favor of any long-term lease on either one of these properties. I don't think the city of Escalon needs to be in the business of farming. If it was such a brilliant idea, then every community around here would be trying to buy up acreage and grow almonds and, and grow walnuts, but they're not. And I don't think that the benefit to the city outweighs the cost to the city. And when you tie up a property, whether it's the 6.4 or the 19 acres for 20 years, you're basically just, you know, you're just killing it for that whole time.
It's called land banking.
Well, whatever you call it, we have a, a master plan. We already have a plan for those 19 acres. To tie it up for 20 years would be just to throw away those plans.
I don't agree with, I agree with the 20-acre situation. Another one over there, I disagree with you. I think that it's not wasting your money. It's just land banking. It's a source, and when you talk about other communities, you've got to remember something. Escalon's not like the other communities around us. We have chosen to be a little smaller community, where we don't have that constant influx of construction cost of money coming through this town. So we have to be a little more creative in how we put money away in different areas, and land banking is one of them.
I know you've talked about a funding mechanism out there for the 6.4 acres. You've talked about a, a solar plant. We've talked about.
That didn't work.
Well, we've talked about different things, about building this or that, but I would agree with Mr. Fox that we should sell that 6.4 acres and be done with it, and take that money and put it in the parks fund.
Gone.
And yes, it would be gone. And so would the, it is a, it's a losing investment. It's losing money. So if you guys want to keep a property that's costing us money in property taxes.
Between the two properties, we're not losing money currently.
No.
What do you, well, what are we making? How much?
Well, I can tell you with the rent of the house, it covers more than our costs for both properties combined.
Okay, well, are, is this, to me, it's, are the city, are we supposed to be in the business of renting houses and leasing land and growing almonds? I don't think we are. I think there's a better, smarter way to utilize, utilize the land.
But it's securing, it's securing an asset, and I view as, with the desired development that you've expressed and others have expressed, depending on how fast this town grows, hopefully slow in my opinion, but as it grows, I look at that 6.4 acres as possibly something that we need to make use of as a city. City yard downtown's pretty darn small and congested. Some point in time, we're going to outgrow that. As we grow more services in this town, we're going to need more equipment, more city trucks, more everything. We might need that for a corporate yard.
Perfect idea.
You're going to sell that asset to help improve the other one, maybe down the road. It might be 20 years, but I foresee, what, what's an acre of nuts going to give us over a 20-year lease? I don't think we're going to do anything with it for 20 years. My recommendation on the 6.4 is just to lease it for 20 and be done with it.
Bingo.
Collect a little revenue. It's going to cover more than our property taxes and irrigation costs. Make some money, throw it in the fund, and, and land bank it for the next 20.
Yep.
I don't think the city's going to outgrow the current corporate yard in 20 years, but it's something we can utilize when that comes up in 20, and it's set it and forget it. It's 20 years, it, it covers its own self and makes a little money. Debatable on the 19 acres, how we go about it. I agree with, with Mayor Protem Leggero that we obviously need to set aside skate park. We've got the SSGID connection, potential senior housing development. I would think that we would possibly carve out stage one of an expansion of the park, since we're going to tear out trees and they're going to redo it, to where we make use of, okay, and not, not be today or tomorrow, but we've banked another two acres for X number of ball fields or soccer fields to grow the park, stage one. And then we, then maybe we land bank the other and let them lease it. If it's an agreeable amount with a farmer, we have to negotiate that. But then that would cover it, because obviously, we're going to mow down the house and where that rent goes away.
Right.
Soon as we build senior housing, it's going. But depending on how fast that happens, we're not moving rapidly on that.
I don't know soon.
So it's going to take a couple of years on the 6.4 to gather itself and, and repay itself.
Right.
But that's my kind of thinking of what we do with the 19. I'm not in favor of dumping the property. I want to try and utilize it.
Bingo.
As best I can, but still maybe facilitate, even if it's just, we turf it and it's sprinkled and it's open lawn, we can paint lines and make, let the Little League guys go play soccer out there and have six more Little League fields for the, for that. And maybe one of the small backfields, backstops, it costs us, what, a couple grand? I don't know. Well, in theory, if Murphy's project goes, that's a million dollars worth of fun.
Okay, listen, guys.
I agree, I agree with Councilmember Bellinger on a lot of this stuff.
Okay.
You know, because here's the thing, if they, let's say if we ended up buying out the last 10 acres, okay? Because it looks like pretty much the frontage we're going to want to do something else with. The back 10, that may be much more longer term, okay? If they, if they're willing to do with 10. The other factor in the short run is this, if, I believe in the previous contract, the tenant, who is going to replant the orchards, was therefore also going to be pulling out the old orchard, I believe. And that's going to be a cost that either they're going to do it or we're going to have to do it. And I don't know what fund we would pull the monies out of to do it. I have a feeling I know which fund we'd pull the monies out of to do it. But that's another advantage of having the tenant, you know, long-term leases. Yeah, so that we're just.
You build it, where they take, they clear the whole 19, basically.
Well, I mean.
They replant 10 and the 9 are vacant.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? I'm going to show some little naivety when it comes to farming and trees here. I was just trying to figure out, so if we, we tell, let's assume we tell the tenant we're not going to do a long-term lease, and the farmer says, well, then I'm done, I'm out. Can we sell those trees that are not producing anymore? Do, do trees make money? Do almonds, trees at the end of their life get cut up for firewood?
They make firewood often, that's about it.
It's going to cost you as much to tear down and make it, that, to sell it. It's an even.
Good question.
I've learned. Now, now I understand.
It's not like, it's not like timber, you know, or lumber, where you.
It's not walnut, it's not walnut burls that can make some money.
You know, there is some value to it, you know, as firewood or people coming in and tearing it up, but yeah, it's not.
There is a company or two in the valley that does take the wood as compensation for removing it. So that's one option.
Right.
But you're still, and they will pull the burls, I mean, the roots out as well. There's one in Livingston, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we used the one I used to run that orchard removal company. So there are options out there regardless of that, if we didn't have a farming contract. But the other thing is too, again, I think there's, we can revisit possible other uses for it. I mean, I mean, we still have demand for trailer parking, and we have demands for other truck parking out there. We could put a parking lot out there for a while if we wanted to.
We also, I do like the idea of the corp yard moving, but maybe the corp yard moves to the 19 acres, and then you've got this property down here that's.
Unloyal.
Available.
Yeah, and there's that as an option.
Something about that?
No, we talked about the 6.4 land, land banking to be used for the next yard for the city. Do they need six and a half acres? I don't, I don't think they do. So I think that's a bad idea.
Well, I, I'm kind of torn on the six, 6.4 acres, you know, could we sell it? Do we keep it? Long-term lease it? But having survived the recession in 2008, and the property that we had.
Saved our butts.
It saved us from going bankrupt, because we were able to leverage that, to borrow against it, to make sure that we can restructure.
Yeah.
So that's where, that's where the value comes in. It's the value of the real estate, you know, and whether it goes up or down, it's still something that we have to, to cushion whatever.
That's why we got that nice, healthy reserve fund right now, so we don't have to borrow anymore. And that's the reason during the recession, we increased it, so we don't have to do that again.
That was a big, that was a big plus.
Okay, anyway, so where are we at with this now? We're.
We're coming.
Public comment time again. How about that? Anybody in the audience want to come up and talk about what we've been discussing this evening? No? How about on the phones? Mr. Fox is going to come up. All right, Mr. Fox. I want to clarify. Go ahead.
Adriana, earlier I mentioned and brought up the fact that 6.4 acres, in my opinion, should be sold, but I know that the mayor, he likes that out there. When we talked about selling it before, he wanted to put it somewhere else in the general fund, and so.
It can't go in the general fund, it has to go in the rec. That's probably, thank you very much.
That's why I brought it up. If you're looking for money in the rec, if you're looking for a skate park, long-term lease, it, it's right there. 6.4 acres for a skate park and, and done, so.
What's the one-time value of 6.4 acres of farmland in this town?
It's worth about $450 for that property, probably.
How much?
About $450.
That's not, not meant for me to make.
Yes, and any money, if, you know, if we were to sell or do anything with that, all goes into the parks and rec for both properties.
It's worth how much? 450 grand?
Yeah.
So it's going to make like $9,000 a year.
Good.
So if it makes $9,000 a year, times 20 years, you make $180,000 over the next two decades, when you could sell that next month and make twice as much, and save 20 years of everybody's life, and put that money to use somewhere else.
Not going to do it.
Well, my, my second comment real quick is that I'm really sorry, I need to apologize for all the hassle that I caused, not only at this meeting, but in prior meetings. See, a little history is that when I was elected to the council, the city had got into a 31-acre parcel out here for a regional park through 2010 state park fund. So when I got elected, I took a look at it, said, what's 31 acres when we have 19 right over here, closer to the city? So you know how long it took from 2007 to get that cleared out? The city had to pay back $350,000 to the state, had to get the covenants written, had both of the legislatures write the law, and in July of 2015, Brown signed it free and clear, no covenants, and that's when we made the transition, sold it, and they got the 19 acres. But I really didn't think this far down the road, there would be this much discussion and, and arguments and hassles about what to do with the 19 acres and the 6.4. Thank you.
Yeah, Danny, thanks a lot.
Well, just another thing, whatever you borrow money from a fund, you have to figure out you're going to have to pay back.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, so.
If it helps the council, what's before the, what's before them tonight is determining whether or not to even consider entering into a long-term lease.
It depends on the acreage we have left on the 19 for me. I mean, if we have enough there that he's interested, that might be an option. Depending on what we decide to do with the other property, if you're going to set aside the land for the senior housing, if you're going to build out, I mean, take the skate park, well, the skate park's not really part of that land anymore, anyway. It's pretty much a car parking lot.
Yep.
So that's out of the way. But you also have, like Councilman Bellinger brought up, was the phase one, we might want to start on that, if we get the development funds from this 75 homes, it comes into play. So, and he's right, a couple acres of green grass out there would be nice. I mean, it gives us, we are crowded for land out there. We don't have a lot of parkland for kids. They're back-to-back out there. So that's one option. So we don't, how do we figure out whether or not we can go a long-term lease until we can figure out what we're going to do with the land we have? That's number one. Then number two, the 6-point acre, I'm a staunch believer, you don't get rid of accidents, despite what other people may think, it's something that you can count on when you're in a desperate situation. It saved our butts last time. I know that everybody's chewing at it to get the money now, you know, that's fine. I understand the point of view, but I don't agree with it. That's all.
How about we do something like this? We do not sign a long-term lease for the 19 acres, because we're doing so many things over there. We can rip the trees out, and we can always revisit that option later with maybe a carved-out portion of that. And I'm not gonna sit up here and, I, I don't, I think you guys, or I think the idea is wrong about doing another long-term lease on, on the six point four, but, you know, if we can do something right on the nineteen, then we can go ahead and do the long-term lease on the six point four, if you guys wanna do that.
Well, we're gonna look at both of them, Peter, 'cause we don't have an answer for either one of them.
I think it'd be adequate tonight just to ask, uh, the, uh, the, the grower, how many acres can we live with? What's the minimum we can live with there?
Good point, good point.
You know, I mean, yeah, and just go from there.
I'd also like to know, we get in a percentage, but once the trees are mature, what, year four or five, and for how long? What's an anticipated, our percentage, I know it's a percentage, but how much does that in real dollars actually equate out to be for how long if we did a long-term lease on either one of these properties? Okay, the first few years, we're gonna get basically next to nothing. Okay, great. But then we're gonna slowly build up year five, we're at full kick for the next ten, twelve years or whatever it is. What does that revenue really look like so we can decide if that makes sense or not?
And that's all, and that would all be negotiable too. So you could go into that contract, take that one to five years, and then maybe up the city's share, and as long as you both agree to that. Like, right now, we're, we're only collecting fifteen percent on the nineteen acres, and I think it was seven and a half.
That's because they were aging dying trees.
They're old and whatever trees, they're obviously gonna have much more value. Um, in past, like leases that I've seen, it's been eighty, twenty, seventy-five, twenty-five.
Just kinda curious what the revenue stream would be if we did a long-term lease.
Yeah, and we can find that out.
What's an estimated ballpark? We're not gonna hold anybody to it, but just, we're gonna see twenty-five grand a year, twelve grand a year? What's the?
Yeah.
Kinda sliding scale?
Tonnage.
Yeah.
It's all about tonnage.
Yeah, and I know over the last few years too, the, the value of, of, of types of nuts is, has fluctuated a lot too. Um, due to, you know, the, the economy and other things that have taken place. And so that, that kind of messes with it as well. So what we can do is I can reach back out to, uh, Tilbury Farms, um, review all these questions we have on minimum acreage that's acceptable, minimum of years for the lease. Um, we also talked about establishing, trying to establish an estimated value on both of the properties, correct? Or do you wanna just do that on Saint John?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay.
How much could we sell the land for?
And we've provided that before, so I can get that updated for you.
Is the six point four scheduled to be annexed into the city there at the current municipal service?
There's no, there's no municipality, I mean.
Yeah.
No services out there? Okay, just wanna double check that before.
Um, and I don't believe our sphere of influence goes out that far, so it's, it's completely outside. The only thing that, that keeps it attached to us being able to develop it is because we own it. If we don't own it anymore, and whoever owns it in the future, is gonna have to go through county for everything. So.
I think of the nineteen, it's probably worth revisiting DeRusi's, um, conversation with that property.
What, do you wanna buy some of it?
Yeah. He likes the barrier between mothers' or grandmother's house and development.
To see what he added in mind.
I can reach back out to Mr. DeRusi as well. And then you guys had mentioned revisiting the master plan. Want me to bring a copy of that?
Yeah, yeah.
A look at it?
Yeah.
Okay.
My final thoughts would be the six point four, I guess, I don't really care what we do with that. Um, and the nineteen acres, um, there's no way that we can sign a long-term lease. I don't think that would be in the interest of the city. That would be a very bad decision, and I would not support any long-term lease on any of that nineteen acres.
Okay, so anyway, we're gonna get back to this because you're gonna go speak with this, uh, farmer and see what kind of conditions he finds acceptable, which gives us an idea what we have to work with. And then we can make a more of an intelligent decision then.
Okay.
Does that work?
Sounds great.
And then six point four acres, get a quote on the lease on that deal too.
Okay.
And, uh, that's kinda what wraps it up, guys?
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't mind if you can talk to somebody if we were to irrigate and grass, two acres of ground to make it grass. Just curious if we turfed it.
Yeah.
Uh, just, just curious what the first phase, if we just turfed it and irrigated it, how much, obviously we'd probably have to fence it, I guess.
Cost of water.
I'm just curious.
Okay.
Couldn't hurt to know.
How much roughly?
It would sure help us.
Will do.
Scale, you know, talking about twenty grand, two.
Wouldn't that be, that would be adjacent to the existing park, right, though?
Yeah, that's what I was.
So that land would be right up against it?
I would imagine so.
Okay, good, just so we know what land.
That's my thought to expand.
All right, got one last little thing to throw out. I think you, this is not a, you guys won't hate me for this, all right? I think we need some public basketball courts in this town. I think we need to be able to play basketball somewhere. So maybe part of your plan.
Help or tell.
Throw a little, it's all gated off.
It'll get it off now.
Why? They closed it. Why?
It's a closed campus.
Yeah, that's right.
Closed campuses.
I'm just saying, basketball court, there you go.
Basketball, pickleball too. Heard a lot about pickleball.
Okay, anyway, so we have direction for you. You're accepting a direction. Give me the line now, please.
Oh, somebody was saying something. Anybody?
Huh?
Sounded like somebody was talking.
No.
On the line.
I was letting Peter know we have a nice basketball court in Lotta Park.
On Park.
Oh, Lotta Park.
Good point, thank you.
California and Oklahoma.
Yeah, that's the old, what's his name, I remember the old people donating.
California and Oakland.
Okay, so.
Strike my last comment.
There you go. There you go. Council of Communications, uh, Mr. uh, Councilman Crudge, what do you got?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Alz. Uh, good discussion tonight. Um, welcome, Dominique. First meeting, running things. Good job. Um, I would like the, uh, young lady to the left of you to introduce herself. She's the first one here, so Courtney.
I realize I forgot about that at the beginning of the meeting.
Courtney, go ahead and tell us, uh, tell us what you're all about and your name, please.
I'm Courtney Mog. I'm the accounting technician. I've been here for four months now.
How's it going?
Pretty good. Yeah, I like it here.
Sweet.
You know, it's, it's high-techy, so I decided to throw her in early.
Yeah.
Not just me, if it doesn't work out, it's both of us.
Share responsibility. There you go.
She's also our deputy city clerk, and so in the future, she will be attending the meetings as additional staff.
Lucky.
How is the new city finance director doing? Did she go on board yet, or how's she doing?
She's been on board for two weeks. Um, she is planning on attending the next meeting, and she's getting her feet into the ground, going through our stuff and moving forward, and she'll definitely be a proponent of, of going through our finances for the skate park and making sure we can, we can do that. So she'll be looking into that.
Cool. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
All right, Councilman Bellinger.
Uh, just a couple of things. As I see, uh, around town, we're making progress with NG with some solar panels. Uh, looks like the community center is pretty well wrapped up. Is that correct, Justin? Are they pretty much done out there?
Yeah, the community center's been, yes, the community center got wrapped up and got tied into PG&E on the first, which was last Friday. And, uh, just not to jump ahead, but they have approximately got about five hundred and fifteen meters installed. They're doing about thirty to forty a day.
Awesome. In that regard, out at the community center, in the grand scheme of this plan with NG and everything, uh, some of the flower beds are looking a little bit haggard out there. Do we have a plan now that construction is done to go back through and, uh, spruce back up the landscaping around the, uh, community center and the, uh, veterans wall that we've got out there?
Yeah, definitely. It's, it's looking really bad out there. In about another month, all the landscaping interruptions will be out of the way, and then me and, uh, Swift Landscaping will get together, come up with a great plan to make it look better out there.
Okay. Veterans Day is coming up next month. Just curious there. Uh, that, that goes with all the other projects around town as well with the solar, I would assume then, as they wrap up, we'll continue that. Um, and that's pretty much all I've got for tonight.
Yes, that's correct.
Councilman Swift.
I forgot what I was gonna say.
Sorry.
Couple billion points. No.
You were donating all the landscaping around the community center?
Well, you haven't just spent all the money.
No, I thought you were donating that as a business owner.
No, 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 no.
I just thought of that.
Yeah. By the way, nice job, you guys. Good start. Great. Nice job both of you. Very nice, very first, for first meeting, very nice. For a great job, guys. Did a wonderful job. Uh, I'm glad you came back, uh, Chief Black, and actually this to, to, to Justin as well. So got a question. Uh, over on one of the gateway areas in town today, I noticed, first thing this morning, and I know it's the same at the end of the day. There, number of pillows on one of the benches, like like four or five buckets full of personal possessions. And I've always been taught to, to be respectful of other people's possessions and things. And obviously, these are the possessions and things of somebody who may or may not have a domicile, shall we say. Uh, but by the same token, do we have any kind of policy for removing that? And how soon can we, do we remove it?
All you need to do is call the police department with found property. We'll come out and pick it up.
Okay, all right. Is that, do you know about the departments, and do they do that? Are there any repercussions when they do that? I just don't open up a can of worms.
If you, if you call us and we pick it up, we'll retain it for safekeeping.
Okay.
Somebody wants to come in and claim it, identify it, we'll release it with a property receipt, and it's done deal.
Very good, fair enough.
And just to clarify, that works for what seems to be abandoned property. But we cannot take anybody's property without proper notice.
Right.
And so if the person was there, let's say, sleeping or making the bus stop a, their shelter, um, taking their property without their ability to keep it and hold on to it would be a takings under the constitution. So.
Yeah.
There was a number of. Literally a court, a California Supreme Court case this month that talked about a bed, a used bed that was laying on the sidewalk that the person was using. And the court had said, no, whether it's a bed or their backpack with personal belongings, it's their belongings, and it's subject to due process rights.
So can these not be removed?
They can if it's, if it's abandoned, if it's, there's nobody around, nobody claimed, claim, and it looks, and again, the courts haven't create, given us the perfect answer on what is clearly abandoned. There was such a thing as clear in the law. But clearly abandoned property can, is, is abandoned property and you can do.
Councilman Swift, if you, if you give me an exact location, there was a number of incidents where somewhat transient subjects had been arrested. It could have been oversight on the officer not noticing it and left it behind, which we would retain for safekeeping.
Right, you'd have to retain, if you're arresting them, you have to take all their stuff.
Incident, I could look it up, and we can remove it that way.
And again, the reason I bring it up, it was there this morning, seven thirty AM, and I also saw it there as I walked by, five PM, in the exact same setting. Nobody there in the morning, nobody there, nobody in the bushes behind it or anything like that. So that, that's why I brought that up. So it sounds like maybe we have some leeway with that.
Just need to tell me where.
I'll tell you where, yeah. Hey, by the way, last thing, if anybody else had a chance, Sunday, great time over on Main Street. This last Sunday, the chamber had its annual, uh, pumpkin carving. Uh, contest and little costume contest. I think about a hundred pumpkins that were given out, and kiddos carved up some really great costumes, guys. So everybody's getting into the spirit of the season now, so. That was good to see. Good to see the community coming out for that. And that's all I have.
Pro Tim Leggero.
Uh, thanks for the, uh, continued support on the skate park. Uh, I think that's, uh, one of those, uh, facilities that the community has, uh, wanted for a long time. So it's nice to, to see that that's moving forward, and we got some more direction and structure to get that accomplished. The pool, I know that if Gary Haskin were at this meeting, he would, uh, want us to find a way to make sure that we can continue to provide swim lessons to drown-proof the kids out there. So if there is a way to, to patch that and keep it operating for the remainder of the agreement, I think that would be fantastic. Uh, other than that, I'm good. Thanks.
Very good. Well, generally speaking, uh, impressive this after, this evening. You guys have all come up with some good debate, good arguments. Don't agree with all of them, but they're still good arguments. And I think that's great about you guys. We're all kind of our own opinions, so that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to bring up this evening, I was approached by a couple of people in the community about the two eighteen. It didn't, I didn't know that the two eighteen was a requirement to write in a letter. I thought it was like a check mark, yes or no. Why is that not the case?
It's not the ca, it's just not the case.
Well, why not? Why can we elect a president of the United States with a check, or a governor, or a senator, but yet because of two eighteen, we have to write a letter back to protest?
Well, yes.
That's crap.
The short answer is yes.
Okay, my response is it's crap. Why is it so difficult for the public to be able to express their opinion in a situation like that where voting for the president of the United States, you put a check by his name?
You know, if you think about it though, I'm not quite sure. Um, it's very easy in our multimedia world to get, to throw stuff out there, right? No, no, no. And we all know when it comes down to rate increases, the, in, the natural reaction is no.
Can we throw barriers?
No, there's no barriers there. They could come here. It's just saying is it, uh, don't we want it to make it easier to actually, uh, put out there and instigate these rates that we know we need? Versus someone just going, oh, I got a piece of paper, I'm gonna check no, because that's what we all do, and all of a sudden, nothing's ever gonna pass if that's, if you have a checkbox for yes or no on the rates. If they're really interested, great, they got the notice. All they gotta do is send a email or send a, a letter in.
I still think it's a prejudiced way of doing it, because a lot of people won't write, because A, they can't, a lot of them, and B, English, do we see, how many languages does this thing go out in?
Just English.
Why is that? How come it didn't go out in Hispanic, or Spanish, or, uh, Mung, or Chinese, or all of the above? Why is that?
I bet there's some great state legislatures that would love your opinion to start modifying Prop 18 with those kind of ideas.
But I think it's just, it's, I understand your perspective where you think they should just sign on and go. I get that. But here's the problem I have. I don't think it's reasonable for government to say to people, uh, go ahead and sign up your protest, but it's not gonna be easy. Go ahead. And that's what you're saying.
I'm not saying that either way. I'm just, I'm just trying to point out a practicality.
I understand that.
Which is this council actually approved the rates, said it's necessary.
We're not talking about this council, Mark.
And now sent it out there. That's all that, that's all that I was.
My question is, why couldn't it have been a check? You say because it's too easy for people to check things off.
Well, so, so the two eighteen describes the process, and, and the, the minimum requirement.
Correct.
We could theoretically say mail out in the, the newsletter and the water bill, a card that they, you know, can mail back to the city that says.
That's what should have happened.
Opposed, or, you know, for, for or against. But I guess the for doesn't really matter. It's those that oppose it.
That's what you're looking for.
So we, we do, I, I think ultimately, we do have that as an option.
Yes, we didn't explore that option.
We could tighten it up.
I think it's sloppy. And I'll tell you what, despite what you say, or disagree here, we can disagree on this, but the deal is this. What I think is going crazy is that state comes down with multiple mandates, unfunded, one after another, and the public goes, well, man, we got no choice. That's BS. We do have a choice. And the choice is to say no. And you know what they're gonna say? Well, then you funded. You know what we're gonna say? No. When does this world come around to the point where we're quitting being told what to do all the time and how to do it? When does that happen? Are we a society of drone, I mean, cheap, where, well, you know, the state said we gotta do this. What if the state told you to jump off a cliff? Would you do it? I mean, that's my dad's old saying. My point is this, I want everyone to have as much transparency and as easy expression as possible. And when I see something where you're telling people I have to write in to protest, I know damn well there isn't probably twenty percent of the people in this town don't do that. And there's fifty percent probably that don't wanna pay the extra fee. So is that really fair to chastise them that way? That's my point.
Well, part of, part of the problem, not to get into a discussion about it, but part of the problem is what we're trying to do with these rates is we have a plan. We have a plan going forward and what we wanna provide to make sure that the community has.
Absolutely.
Absolutely secure infrastructure.
Right.
And that's the way that, you know, when you, when you talk about it and we present it, that's what it is. It's not, you know, the surface water, a new well. Those are just things that we, we have to provide those.
Absolutely.
Absolutely have to provide those. So although the two eighteen is, is not ideal.
It's extraordinary. It is an extraordinary expense that doesn't fall in line with anything other than the new mandate that came from the state of California. And that's the problem I got with these things, because there's too many unfunded, and another thing I have a problem with is here you got the state of California telling you, we've got a bill, and everybody gets to have the same bill. Escalon, who's about eight thousand, Sacramento, two hundred plus thousand. That's BS. We have to stop this process and say, wait a minute, we're not opposing these types of things. We want some adjustments made. Because if we don't ever speak up, we're gonna get buried like everybody else has. And you're gonna take a beautiful community like this and ruin it. Because it's gonna be forced into financial ruin if it doesn't grow more. That's the problem I have with it. I'm just sick of it. It just makes me sick that the government can dictate to you and you have no consequences, that you can do anything about it. It's wrong. I think America is going down in a bad way when that stuff is. It's just my opinion, but that's how I feel about it. And it hit off my chest. Anyway, I don't wanna go out and kill somebody tonight, but you know. Anyway, there's that. And the other thing is, whatever happened to the deal we're doing the business license? We had a situation where we're gonna do business license with this outfit that came and gave us, be, a talk, and there was gonna be this idea to sign up all these businesses, and we're gonna have it on the computer, and all the businesses would be on the computer, and whatever happened to that?
If I remember correctly, we didn't have enough interest.
Is that what it was?
They needed a minimum of a hundred businesses. I don't, I don't think we got more than twenty, maybe, maybe less than that, and so we, we ended up not moving forward.
All right, all right. Well, then I'm done. I had my little tantrum. I'm done. All right, anybody else wanna say anything before we close it out tonight? Okay, learn to speak up and become America again tonight. Jeez, I hate this.